Thank you. Want to welcome everybody to our second session of our city council public meeting budget retreat being held here on April 10th at 5:30 Central City Hall. We welcome staff that's involved, if there's any members in the public, if there are members in the public and councilors here. Let's make sure that we can conduct business tonight. Let's do a roll call. Councilwoman Meacham. Sorry, Councilwoman Hurst will say it. Just raise your hand if you can.
Hurst is present.
Flummer is present.
Heyman present.
Meacham present.
Summer Hayes present.
Thank you, council for all being here. All five council members are there accounted for. We welcome all staff. Like I said, we've had the police department move front center, but before they kick it off, I'm going to give either our city manager or finance director both a chance to say something. We are continuing from Tuesday night. We'll hear from the police. We got parks and parks committee. We got, then we have community services. So pretty much anybody did report on Tuesday night. So city manager, finance director, anything before I kick it over to the police?
Just real quick, you know, on your table, you should have received three pieces of paper. The first is a citywide capital and equipment and projects request list. This was a request that was made on Tuesday night, so I just compiled and put it onto a summary. So that's what that sheet is. And then the other two are regarding our sales tax. There are those graphs that we looked at. More just for informational purposes. On the...
Tax, property tax.
Or property tax. Did I say sales tax?
Yeah, you didn't.
Sorry. Thanks. Property tax. So on the tax rate history sheet, the, on the left side is the rate for the given year. The ones in red are where the city went through the truth and taxation process and increased the rate. And then the, the other graph that shows all the cities in the county, that just shows where Centralville compares as far as the tax rate goes. The cities with an asterisk are cities that went through the truth and taxation process for 2024. I don't know if you want to get into that now or later, or any questions, but...
Sorry, the asterisk is those that did do truth and taxation.
For 2024, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
That's all we have for right now, Mr. Mayor. Let's go to questions.
Okay. Great. Chief, lieutenant?
Ooh, we got Ts.
Yeah. Well, I'm grateful to be here and talk to you about the police department. And just to give you a little background, I'm sure you know, but just kind of remind you kind of where we're at with our police department. So we have 20 sworn officers in our department and then three non-sworn support staff headed by chief and lieutenant. We have 10 patrol officers that are led by two patrol sergeants and one administrative sergeant. We have three detectives and one school resource officer led by one detective sergeant. Centralville officers and staff conduct day-to-day policing operations in the city, which includes basic patrols, traffic enforcement, traffic crashes, calls for service, investigation of crimes, prevention of crimes, citizen assists, civil problems, mental health crises, medical emergencies, and homelessness outreach as well, and then many other duties that come up that we do. As you look at that picture, it's like she moved on, but we're missing our newest officer who's not in, who's not in the picture of our officer in training who just started last week. So he's got not quite a week in the academy done yet. His name is Jase Jones, just so you know. We're excited to have him getting, getting ready to go. Just wanted to give you on the next slide some information about kind of all the kind of specialty things that we get involved in as, as well. And these are things that come up that are important to the police department. So we have in-house instructors that teach all things related to firearms, TASER, vest of weapons, emergency vehicle operations, traffic crash investigation, defensive tactics. And you can, you can kind of look, we have K-9 handlers, drone pilots, we have trained phlebotomists, SWAT officers, DARE officers, field training officers. So we have a lot of experienced people in our department that are involved in a lot of good things. Also involved in a few specialty units and collaborative units where we work with, where we combine teams with other agencies involving. So that includes the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force, Child Abduction Response Team, SWAT, Crisis Negotiations, Public Order Unit, and the also involved Critical Incident Protocol Team. Those are great opportunities for a lot of good experience for our officers. So as we dive into the budget, we're just highlighting a few of the changes here, starting off with the vehicle maintenance. We're able to reduce that down by 4,000 for the year. This is due to having a good, healthy fleet where we've had a good rotation of vehicles, which leads to less repairs having to be made. And so we felt comfortable reducing that down. We did want to add a, a new line for drone maintenance. Our drone program is growing and improving. The drones have shown their, their selves to be a very valuable tool for us in, in police in the city. We can use, the drone pilots can use those for all kinds of things from checking on, you know, people on mountains and people or suspects and tree or... Anyway, they're, they're just a great tool. They gather a lot of evidence.
What was the cost of the drone originally?
We have several. We've got two and two, I don't know the prices on those.
Yeah, the, the most expensive we have right now, I got $16,000, with probably more than half of that being paid for out of donations. And the next step down was about eight grand and that one was completely donations. And then the most recent one we got was Nevada, which is like an indoor drone that I believe we used some drone, some donation on that one as well. And so for the most part, most of our drone purchases have been through private donations. And so right now we're looking at maintenance. So that...
I was just trying to gauge it in terms of a percentage, like $5,000 versus how much the new one costs on a percentage basis.
Right. Yeah. And so each, each of our drones, we maintain insurance on them, which is, which is not cheap, but we've already shown that we, well worth holding the insurance. Batteries are expensive and need regular changing to keep them, you know, well charged.
Yeah, when they're, when the drone is in flight, those batteries are, they're taking a charge and then being discharged. It's just like a continual process, especially on a prolonged incident like a fire, like a SWAT call or a fire, where the drone is up for, you know, a long period of time and they're swapping those batteries. The chargers will charge them as fast as possible, up to like 75%, and then it'll only top them off if time allows. So, you know, that charging process, it just takes the life of the batteries. There's, there's the insurance like Chief talked about, and then there's just the occasional part replacements that happen. And then also some subscriptions for services related to the streaming of the videos, so they can stream the video right into instant command for us, which is a really nice service. And it also tracks their flight hours, which they're required to keep track of their flight time and everything like that. And it just kind of populates all of that flight data for them. So they, they estimate this, this ongoing maintenance budget at about 5,000 a year for all three pilots and three drones.
What is the estimated life of a drone? I'm sure it depends on how much it's being used, right?
It, it does. Just speaking in terms of technology, less than five years from some of the drone people we've talked to, they're, usually they want you to get into like a five-year contract because by the end of the five years, all the technology's outdated and then they'll stop supporting it at that time.
Oh, okay. So you're going to replace it regardless of its maintenance and it's kind of beyond that technology level?
Thank you.
Okay. Move on to fuel. Again, in order to reflect what we're actually using in our fuel budget, we're comfortable reducing that down. You can correct me, Chief, I think we had bumped that up in anticipating like rising costs in fuel, but that just didn't happen the way we had expected. So we're comfortable reducing that back down to more of the area we're, what we're actually Education and training, you'll see a reduction there of 16,000. Last year, we, we put that 16,000 in in order to send sergeant to the National Innovation Academy this year. That's currently happening right now. He's, he's there, reporting back to us all the things that he's learning, but we don't anticipate needing that next year, so we kept the regular budget minus that amount.
When you are doing, you said you had some in-house training earlier. How many, what is it, what does an average police officer require as far as training? How many hours and is some of that covered in-house? And, and then you, I'm sure you have some that has to be outside, so I'm just trying to understand that.
Given the vary on, so what's required by the state in order to maintain certification is 40 hours in service per year, which is not a whole lot. And it varies on the officer depending on what type of assignment they have, depends on what type of trainings they need to get. So it can, so our officers are really getting closer to 100, I think, probably on an average. And we'll always do as much of that in houses as we can. And that's, that's the benefit of having certain instructors trained that are able to instruct. Usually comes down to like the state certifications, is you have state certified instructors for that stuff.
Do you have certain days each month that you train and you do it when it's...
We don't have a designated training day each month, with the exception of SWAT, which trains twice a month on Wednesdays. But the other trainings, I'm not sure if there's anything that comes up monthly. A lot of it comes around on an annual basis. And so we kind of, our, our admin sergeant has a training schedule, keeps track of which certifications are coming up. And, you know, the ones that everybody has to get, we usually have a date set for those. We get everybody down on the same day. So like on Tuesday, it was firearms and physical fitness. We usually have a designated day where we do all the less lethal stuff as well.
So if it's not their day, you don't just kind of ignore that?
Right. Even if it is their, yeah, even if it is their day, they'll, they'll come in and they'll either pop out and handle severe crime calls or a lot of other agencies cover calls for while they're, while they're all tied up. But usually it will kind of stagger, stagger from that part.
I noticed that there's a small increase for radar maintenance. Is that like the radar, like speed guns?
Yeah. So each vehicle is equipped with, with a radar unit except for the detective and administrative vehicles. All the patrol vehicles have them. And every three years, we have to get those recertified. So there's a fee for the company to come out and recertify every one of those units. And so that increase is, is the anticipated cost for that recertification.
So you would anticipate that goes down next year? This is just a once every three year bump?
Yeah.
I'd see it as two or three.
Is it two? It might be two. I said three, but...
Yeah. I, I think it's three based on posts, but I think we've been doing two.
Okay.
Any other questions on the police department budget, the line items?
I have a couple of kind of off-the-wall questions. So a few years ago, we approved a 360 camera that we hobby. Did you receive it and how many times has it been used or, you know? Is it something that you're using a lot of?
I don't have numbers for you as far as how many times it's been used, but it's, it's in the detectives division, so they're bringing that out when they have a crime scene to document. And so a lot of times it would just kind of depend on the size of the scene and how complicated it is. But we've used it multiple times on different types of scenes in order to document evidence. So...
And has anybody shot on any TASERs?
Only in training.
Yeah, only in training.
Only in training.
Thankfully.
That's good.
So if we have a, we don't have our final membership with the worst increase on health insurance, but what was it, 4%?
7%.
You guys have gone down though in your, in your budget of medical insurance.
They have quite a few, not quite a few, they have a number of employees that don't take advantage of it.
Okay. Because that's like 56 out of 100.
We do have one employee. I don't think it's recognized here that from, that will be taken advantage of it next year, or taken advantage of it now and will be next year. That is recognized? It is recognized, okay.
I'd say if it's not, can we get it recognized?
Well, it is, okay. It was a reason. Happened reason.
On wellness line item, remind me, I think we, in my, vaguely in my memory, this is a reflection of something we already passed.
So, yeah, on, on the officer wellness, we, it's, it's gone up 100%.
Right.
Right? It's doubled the price. And it just has to do with actual usage of the, the program. And we've, we've been working with evidence to, to continually fund it. And, and we, we've had to go, you know, do repeated purchase orders to, to keep the program going. So we're actually looking at changing companies this, this coming year. And one, which we believe will get even better services out of. The, the overall price is, is probably going to be equivalent, but, but once we start looking at, you know, 20, 24,000 or however much it was for the program, we really start looking hard at what we were getting out of, out of the company and the ease of use. And so mental health is, is, is an expensive program.
Chief or Lieutenant Barnes, I noticed that we have budgeted $88,000 for overtime pay. That's a lot of overtime pay. Is that suggesting to me that we are, we are understaffed? I mean, are we having to have that many people cover because we don't have enough staff to do full-time? Or is that a, is that a normal thing? Like you're okay and you want people working overtime? I mean, how do we extend that number?
Yeah. So, so the 88,000 is going to be a conglomerate of all sorts of different programs, including understaffing. So, so we've been offering overtime shifts on days where we have skeleton crews, right? Which means we're a minimum staffing. And, but in that 88,000, we also include, like we're about to start up mountain patrol shifts. This is, and we have, we're about to get into the neighborhood patrol shifts now that we're in the nicer weather again. It's callouts. I mean, there's a myriad of things that it covers, but it is not indicative of, of understaffing, though, though part of it is, but the overall number is not.
I recall it was a program that previous council implemented because it was less expensive
To offer overtime and hire a new officer?
Than hire a whole new officer with a whole new vehicle, et cetera.
Chief and I have had this conversation because that's, because there's been a shift in the police world, because I would love to see that overtime budget higher, to be honest with you. But you're seeing less officers in the new age taking less shifts and overtime shifts because it used to be slow down the overtime. This is getting way out of control, but now it's really hard to get officers to take overtime as much as it used to be. And so, but it's less expensive to pay you time and a half than it is to hire a new officer and pay you time and benefits.
Sure, but forcing officers to work a bunch of overtime is not...
No, no. And that's why...
...in wellness.
No, no. So that's why we're not forcing it. But you, you used to have a shift.
We're budgeting for it, but we're not forced.
But what I'm, what I'm saying is it's just been a shift in the mentality and the culture within the police department. I'm not saying they need to be working overtime, but it's been kind of an interesting...
They're obviously not feeling pressured because it's 25,000 at the six-month mark this year. So I don't, that to me would say, there's not a huge amount of pressure to be at least a halfway mark, right?
We had a, we had a good for six months.
Well, that's good. I, I am grateful for that.
All, all it takes is one or two bad events.
And then you've got an issue.
And it's, big chunks of it are, are taken up, like the, like, like I'm sure, like on the, the gas leak in the middle of Fort Pluss and Parrish. And I, I, we're, we're going to try and go after the company, try to recruit some of that, but you're, you're talking, one officer ended up working close to 22 hours straight. He ended up, his next day, he was off the next day, so it worked out that way, which is sometimes you end up with a whole lot of hours all at once on a event. And it's very difficult to kind of plan for that.
I mean, 2024 at 75,000, that was actual usage. And so you bumped that up a little. I just want to make sure that we're not, that you guys are not so overburdened that we're like, oh, we can save the city money by having our officers just work lots more hours and not spending time with their families.
So I would just step in because I was one of the real investigators when we do the summer night patrols, we've got them electric bikes. And we were just, I was with the chief one day when we had nine house bird routes that morning, he got called on the radio. And that was the day I just panicked, I know, I can't go to battlefield safe. So I said, we need a new officer, what do we need? And so we talked to the officers and he was really afraid we wouldn't be able to get takers for it. We gave them $30,000 and they can pick and choose. They don't have to work a whole shift. So they can work two hours past their shift, two hours earlier, or come in for four hours, whatever they want. And they work in the middle of the night and they only work on patrolling our, our homes.
But it's strictly voluntary.
It's strictly voluntary.
We don't have a circumstance where we're like, hey, we've got a skeleton crew, we really need somebody else to step up.
This one was totally voluntary.
Nobody has volunteered, so hey, congratulations.
But the chief came back to me and said he was shocked at how many takers there were. And then I went in and talked to a lot of the officers and they said they loved it because it was actually real police work. It wasn't a ton of paperwork and reports. They were actually out on the street working because they weren't taking calls. The state gives them overtime shifts they could take all the time. Like you can get a DUI shift, or not all the time, I guess, but certain times or seatbelt shift. Any officer, when they offer those from any city, takes them. The state pays the overtime, but they're not allowed to, to answer our calls unless we have a life-threatening one. They just look for DUIs or they just look for seatbelts. So that was kind of the example we took with this. And it reduced the crime in our city by a ton.
And I would love to hear from Chief Lieutenant, are your officers happy with the overtime, with this voluntary overtime program that we're offering? And are you happy with this volunteer overtime program that we're offering?
Yeah. I mean, it, yeah. And, and I want to be clear, like, our officers are struggling with manpower, being on these skeleton crews. And so by, by saying that we, you know, we, we don't have this big overtime budget to help compensate that, that's, that's not true. But, but they are, they're, they're working despite it, they're just working with less officers out of the road for periods of time because of undershafting, which is, which is something we'll, we'll talk about here at the end. But as far as the overtime shifts, the, the officers are able to work as, as much or as little, a little as, as they want or as, as their life allows. And sometimes we, yeah, we think they probably work a little bit too much, certain of them for their mental health. That's something we want.
And you did request, I mean, maybe I'm jumping ahead, but that was one of the questions that I had in my mind, if you had a request for additional FTE, it's obviously not part of this budget. If you want to elaborate now or wait until you...
I'm sorry.
You had it in your presentation.
No, it, it just came into, to future needs of the department.
And what is, what is that position? Is it patrol? Is it something else? What is, in your mind, what is that additional request? What did that look like?
It, it's a patrol officer. And, and so what we've been struggling with is, is hiring. The hiring process is, is now taking much longer than it used to. We used to, we used to build a hire officers who had self-sponsored to be captain. So they came out all ready, ready to go. We'd hire them, put them out of the road, they'd have three months of field training, and there'd be one. So within the time, we lost an officer about four months, four and a half months later, five months, they're out on their own filling a shift. Those self-sponsored officers are drying up and the quality has come down quite a bit with the, the way the market's working. And so now we're having, we're finding ourselves having to sponsor officers through the academy on our own. And so when Chief Child left July 24th, we started the hiring process. We went through the whole process, didn't find anyone we wanted, anyone qualified enough for our standing. So then we opened it back up again. And so the officer who just started Monday in the police academy, he, he's replacing Paul Child's position in the department. And so by the time he goes through the police academy, he goes out on field training, is out in the, we're, we're talking November, right? And so that's...
A year and a half almost?
Right. That, that, we, we are down a position in patrol. And so all the, when you're down a position in patrol, other officers have to adjust their schedule to maintain coverage. And what we're finding is that we are consistently down an officer because of how long it takes to train someone up now, having to go through the academy. And we, on average, we lose about one officer a year to a myriad of things. It's just how it is when you have 20 officers over the course of a career of 20, 25 years, you're going to lose one a year if, if things are good. That's just how it is. But, and if it takes that long to hire up someone, you're always going to be down officers. So we, we got approved for 20 officers, I don't know, maybe six years ago.
Tried to, I started.
We had one period of about three months where we had 20 officers out working and none of them were on field training. I mean, three months in, in five, six years. So what we're wanting is that full-time position, that Victor 21, to, to be kind of that buffer so that we can just have 20 officers. So...
Are you finding that this is consistent? Like as you talk to your counterparts in surrounding cities, are they having the same struggles?
Oh, yeah.
And it's taking them, I mean, it, this is sort of an industry trend right now.
And we got lucky with our new officer. So we, we offered him the position right before Christmas and with the understanding that he would start until now. And we, and he, and he, he really liked our department. He, he dropped out of his other, he, he could have been hired by Highway Patrol before us and been down the road that he wanted us. But he agreed to stay at his current employer and just wait for the position open. We don't always have, and we've been lucky on that, other agencies aren't. And we, we could have found ourselves having to hire him back in December, knowing we, he, he can't start the academy until the beginning of April. And then we had to spend four months finding things for him to do as a non-certified officer. And so, yeah, that is a year and a half, could have easily been, you know, 22 months.
Let me ask you this. Rather than, and I'm, I'm not saying that I'm leaning this direction, I'm just exploring it. Rather than try to staff 21 officers, knowing that we're always going to be down one, right? It's sort of like, what if, what if we were to look at increasing our pay and benefits and start trying to go poach officers, good officers from other cities that are already trained, qualified, competitive ground running? Is that something that we've considered?
It is. We, we've had incentive programs to recruit certified officers. We, we, we have, and, and you want a mixture of officers too. You, you don't want all officers from other, other departments who have, if you want a mixture of new guys, you can just train up into the new department. And we've been lucky to get both. Officer Roseco came from Battleford and we, we, we paid him an incentive to come over.
I mean, I don't want them targeting our officers, to be clear, right? I'm just thinking.
It's definitely, it's definitely a sensitive subject, just so you know.
But I mean, like, I, I mean, I, like, I live in the private world. And so in the private world, we're always looking for, oh, that's a really great person over there. How can we get that person over to work for us?
I, I will tell you, it's difficult to, you got... I, I will tell you, it, it's difficult to, you gotta be really careful when you're looking at hiring over an officer from another agency. Because why are they leaving the agency? Most, and, and so there's, it, it, you have to really vet these people before you hire, hire them, or are you, are you hiring someone else a problem?
Once a cheater, always a cheater, right? If we can poach them, and then who can poach them, and I don't.
And, and the way wages go, it seems, it seems like it's always fluctuating, like, we're on top for a minute, and then, you know, maybe we drop behind, and then we catch back up, and so. Yeah, if you get one of those guys who's always just, guys, officers, who's always just looking for the highest pay, he might be here for a couple years, and then he goes somewhere else.
I, and I was gonna say, that does happen, we raised the, um, police salary pretty significantly a few years ago, and then every city around us just did exactly. Because that's how in demand they are.
Gotcha.
And so it's, and that's a game that we're never gonna win at, I don't think, I mean, I think we want our guys to pay fairly, but.
Just for future consideration, because it's not in our budget this year, but. On a rough order of magnitude to hire a new officer, train them, outfit them with a car and equipment, we've had this discussion before, I can't remember the exact.
About eight percent, probably tax increase.
Oh, I thought it was more than that.
Eight, about eight. Hundred ninety thousand dollars or so.
I think that's what.
A hundred, sorry, a hundred ninety thousand?
I think, yeah, I, I, I think vehicle-wise, we were gonna, we were gonna delay a vehicle and, and keep it in rotation, keep it in price.
Yeah, so.
And to be clear, I'm not trying to upset that card.
That, that one ninety includes or does not include.
There's a good question, I'm brainstorming, because I'm, I, I wanna get you guys the help that you need. Obviously, I'm concerned about officer wellness, right, I don't want any officers feeling like they have to work overtime, or that they have to be, spend time away from their families. You guys do a really important job, but I wanna make sure that you, you, your officers have job satisfaction as well, so.
Yeah, this is a, yeah, the, 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 the need for an additional officer is, is a big need. But I understand it's a big ask for the, for the climate, you know, financially. But it, you know, it doesn't happen this year, we, I, I seriously wanna have a, look, looked at next year and have a, a, a better consideration of it. Because I'm, I'm confident it's not a position that's gonna be staffed all the time, right, we have twenty-one officers, and we're not gonna be paying year-round for twenty-one officers. I mean, it could happen that we get fully staffed and we have to pay an officer, so we have to budget for it. But just based on trends, it just, you're, you're, you're not staffed for fully staffed. No one, no one in police departments is fully staffed for very long, when, if, if fully staffed means an officer goes through the academy and field training. Because when they're field trained, they're paired up, two people on one ship, so that other ship is still empty. So if you're fully staffed, they have to be all the way out of the academy, all the way off the FTL, and it just takes too much time.
Got it.
I will tell you, the other thing I've learned from the council is, officers don't get great pay, I mean, we're competitive now, but we don't pay officers what we should be. In my opinion, they should be paid what our professional basketball players are, because they're really the heroes of our community, and we really need them when we call them. But because of that, in order to stay police officers, if they weren't able to take the overtime, they wouldn't be able to make enough money to support their families. I mean, you look at starting right at a police officer, and so I think that that's another, and I know a lot of them really need the overtime, and if we didn't offer it. We would lose them to somebody who did offer it, because they can't live on flat wages, am I wrong on that?
Yeah, wages, um, what, whatever happened to the housing market, right, is, is, is extremely hard on new officers, finding houses. And it used to be they, they would be able to live here in the area, right, this, this area's a little, a little more difficult to buy housing. But now they're struggling far up north, in the Clinton areas, all the housing prices are just. And I don't know what's gonna happen with this market, how we're gonna make it a, an adjustment everywhere, not just with us.
I, I will share, we have seven officers, including the chief, who make six figures, which, Chief and I were just kind of talking about that, that is unheard of when we started this twenty years ago, right? So we do have seven officers making six figures, which is pretty awesome, but that does also include them working eighty-five, ninety hours a week. So I, I think ultimately they are fairly paid, but I wish we could pay them better too, it's, it's a challenge. I wish we could pay all of our employees a little bit better.
But it's the starting ones that are struggling, and that take, need to take the.
Well, I mean, they start at thirty-one an hour right now, right?
Well, no, it's like twenty-nine, something a little high, twenty-nine.
So, I mean, you're at sixty-four, sixty-five thousand.
Your answer on overtime satisfied me, I, I don't have any concerns there.
I, so when we talk about this extra position though, I'm just looking at the budget on, just on salary and wages. And I'm thinking, if we're always down an officer, but we, we do have one in training and he's getting paid some money, okay, is that, does that help me to understand that better?
He is, he is being paid, and while, while we were down that officer, we were using some of those funds that have been freed up to pay things like the hiring, uh, hiring set. We had to pay it out.
Okay.
On, on two different officers who came to us with certifications. Uh, Officer Ryan came to us halfway through the academy, so he had special functions, uh, certification. And so we actually gave him an incentive that paid off his student loan that he took out to go to that training.
Yeah.
So we, we used the funds for a week.
That's, it's great, I was just gonna say, I'm supportive of getting this going, because I am also concerned about mental health and just. I mean, when you guys are on the job and it's intense, it's really intense, so to have those extra, I think it's great what Robin said, I think it's great to have that opportunity to maybe make some extra money for those that need it. And, you know, have some extra bills here and there to pay, but I also think if we're kind of down an officer all the time anyway, we really do need to get us so that you're not. Constantly struggling to make the shift.
And we've talked about how you, how you do that to make sure you still have twenty officers at all times, but then there could be that one time where you actually are funding twenty-one officers all the time.
But maybe you could, I'm wondering if you could maybe, like, I don't need to see details of it, but maybe you could analyze that and say, look, if we did it this way. You know, this is what the budget would look like, because you could look at it and say, okay, we'll have twenty-one in this moment, but then we drop right back down to twenty.
We were, we happy to have this conversation, a work session, what that looks like, and what the cost would be for a future agenda, or future budget. Unless there's desire to talk about putting it in this budget, but.
May, may I?
With the property tax.
In, in terms of new FTEs, we have a new trained supervisor. You two left last night, there was, uh, the new position that we'll give address later on, you know, building maintenance supervisor, so.
Yeah. Um, can I ask, I, I'm seeing a little drop in retirement, that might be that we've had some retirement going on, and are you funding less just because of that, or?
The state dictates our rates.
It went down a percentage, the state.
So the state dictates our contribution per employee.
Is this that ten percent thing of?
Hmm, not really, it's a little different, home safety is a little bit.
Wait, do you have to be Officer Wellness or the vehicles, computers?
I think, I don't know if we should talk about small equipment.
Uh, no.
Oh, yeah.
Um, oh, you might wanna take this one, because the small equipment was a new line last year.
It was.
That we put in for the, for the tasers, right, and so that line still has the TASER contract in it. Um, and then, you know, there's just a few things, as you can see in the list there, that we're wanting to just replace some things that have gotten old, such as the handgun lights. Our gun safe in the salad court and conference room, and it's, and then a little bit for some other miscellaneous things. Equipment items that, that we need, these equipment type items.
Yeah, we keep needing to buy these items that don't, um, fit into capital, right, capital, we're looking at items five thousand or more. We give these all these little items, and we've been, over the years, we've kind of put them in different places, so now, the last couple of years, we've been trying to put them all into small equipment. And so that, small equipment is something that's gonna fluctuate year to year as we, as our, as our, based on needs. Any, any other questions on line items?
Okay, so capital equipment, um, projects.
Same sixty.
Start off with, um, our vehicles, uh, we've been keeping a four-vehicle rotation over the, over the past few years, which has led to the healthy fleet that I talked about earlier. Reduction in repairs and everything like that. So this, this year, uh, we anticipate, uh, the need to replace, uh, a pickup. That was, was assigned to administration, and, um, replace a patrol sergeant vehicle with a pickup, and then two of the intercepted utilities. You can see the, like, the price break down there, if, if you have any questions on those.
Seems like the, it's a lot cheaper than the pickups that we, that we need as many pickups as we can. Is there a reason why we want the two cups rather than?
Well, so we, we're only doing the, the pickups for the patrol sergeants. So the patrol version there that you see, that includes all the equipment and the upgrade, um, there. The need for that is the sergeants typically carry a little bit more equipment, and then for their role as, as incident command, it gives them a nice workspace. Uh, and ability to carry, carry more items. The administration one was, um, the one that Chief Child had, uh, that's come to the end of its, or it will come to the end of its life the next year, so we're just looking to replace that. Ford did change the discount on, on the F-150s, so, um, the, I'm trying to think, um. They improved it or they, they reduced it, so we get a little bit less, so.
But, but looking at the price, the, I'm seeing the F-150 is very comparable in price to the PIU, you know, do the patrol, and so, um. Yeah, so I mean, the, the, the car without the, without the, uh, equipment in it, it's forty-nine, five for an interceptor, and it is fifty, fifty thousand, four hundred. So really only a thousand dollars more for the, uh, for the, for the, um, for the F-150.
So are these prices right on the screen?
I can see the each.
Yeah.
Oh, dear, okay, okay, got you.
That's the big difference.
I believe there's a.
Well, look though, Robin, if you look at.
I can see the each, I couldn't see the each on the end, I was looking around Spencer, and I missed the each on the end, so I'm like.
So you thought that was the price for two of them, I, that's my bad, but probably.
No, I should have seen, I just did.
My preparation, I should have seen that.
I just looked at that and I thought, oh, that's a big difference.
I was gonna say, I do think, you know, when you talk about like, that you need like a, kind of a place to work, I think that's pretty essential, based on my, right along.
A little bit in price isn't a big deal at all, like I said, I thought if it was a difference between.
It, I did think that too, of course, though, I was like, well, yeah, that's.
And to be honest with you, even if the F-150s, I, I think the problem we have right now is that the F-150s are a lot, it's because the interceptors are a lot, those are the ones we're struggling with. The F-150s, you get a lot more back on trade-in.
Yeah, I was gonna make that point.
And you can, you can easily pay more for an F-150, make it back, but the interceptors are so good for patrol work. Um, patrol work is very difficult on an F-150, day-to-day traffic operations, you're having to do three-point turns on Fourth West, you're going after cars. It's just, the interceptor is a, the explorer, it's, it's now been purpose-built for patrol work, everything in there. They, they've now got like sensors in the back, like if you can be working, and if someone comes walking up behind you, there's a sensor that goes off and tells you someone's coming up on you. You can turn on the rear, the backup camera and you leave it on, just so you can see what's behind you at all times. All, all the, everything in there is just designed now for police work, and, but they, they're getting expensive.
And then when they're, at the end of their life, they're, they just don't bring very much back when we sell them off, because they're. People know what it is when they look at it, they can tell what's been done to it.
Right, they know.
But the pickups, I think we expect the, the pickups to bring a lot more on the, on the back end.
But even the pickups are, like, we're, we're ordering two F-150s, one's actually a, a responder, which is the police version of F-150, where it's got the column shifter. The can, the cons, the center console's missing, it's got a lot of other changes to it, it's not the most desirable F-150. Whereas the, the, the one for the, the, of the yours, uh, will be a civilian model, and it's a lot cheaper, as, as actually a lot cheaper. Yeah, we could talk all day on vehicles, that's what we do, it is a, it's a major expense for us, and it's a very frustrating position that we're in, where the prices of vehicles have gone. And just keep climbing. Okay, keep going, all right, keep going.
Uh, computers, just following our replacement schedule on, on computers, that's, that's, there's no hike in the. I think that's a similar amount to what we anticipated, um, for last year. I get those anticipated through RISA, um, the IT department. And, um, on patrol rifles, I mean, we've got in there, uh, a desire to replace our patrol rifles. Some of them are as much as fifteen years old or, or more on those. We anticipate being able to replace all of those with a newer, you know, kind of updated version. That would come in around forty-five, we think we can sell the old ones for about fifty-seven hundred, um, on those. And this, this is another one, I've been in firearms for a lot of years, so I can answer a lot of questions about rifles and the lighter. Unless it's not interesting, I don't know. So, um, they are, they are pretty expensive, coming in at, um, twelve hundred each, so you might see that, you know, it, it might look inflated, so the forty, they asked for forty. That would include adding, uh, suppressors to these rifles, so that raises the price, um, on them. The idea behind that is that we, we shoot a lot, and, um, you might hear me say what all the time. So there's, there's definitely like a hearing damage component to this, so the idea behind the suppressors is, you're training, or especially firing in close quarters inside a building. Which we haven't had to do, and we hope we don't, um, but we do train for those scenarios, so there's a lot of gunfire, even with ear protection on, it does cause damage over time, so. Going to suppressors would, would reduce the, the hearing impact all the time. So that's just additional add-on on those.
Okay, you're working on. Motorola.
Body cameras, um, do you wanna take this one, Chief?
Yeah, I've, I've been working Motorola, so we've been with Motorola for a while now, WatchGuard is this camera system we're on, they were bought by Motorola years ago, five years ago. And they, uh, discontinued the, um, model of body cam and dash cam that we've been using. And all our, all our video is in the Motorola system, it's on the cloud, Motorola makes a great product. So we're having transition to Motorola's new product, and it's not cheap. And so for body cameras, we're looking to replace all the body cameras in this, and are all at once, it's a hundred thousand dollars for, spread out over five years. We can, we can, you, you can pay for it year to year, you know, pay twenty grand a year for the next five years. I'd prefer just to pay for it all at once, on the cameras, in fact, they, they, they will come out and they will replace the cameras at year three. And then, um, so the, the five-year, at the end of the five years, we own the cameras, but the data behind it ends at five years, and then we'll have to figure things out from there. So this will get us through the next five years, we will have a reduction in one of our other GLs for. Data, like the cloud storage, will, will be going down with this, because each of these cameras can come with their own cloud, cloud storage. But that's gonna take about a year or so to transition and figure out, so we're not comfortable reducing our one data storage GL right now, anticipation of this, because we don't quite know what this is.
There are the two different numbers there then, there's one that's hundred, or.
Yeah, we, we might have to take that out, okay, so we're also buying three dash camera systems for new cars. And Motorola had to lump them all into one quote, and so the, the internal question we have is whether we handle this as a hundred and thirty thousand dollar Motorola thing. Or we take the price of the dash cameras and build them into the price of the car. So, uh, the dash cameras are gonna be installed in the car, so we, we reflected the cost of the dash cameras in the cars, so.
So it should be a hundred.
It is a hundred, yeah. It is a hundred, yeah.
But in this one, it's a hundred and ten.
That was our initial, just kind of place order until we.
We're gonna update that one?
Yes. Yeah.
It's been a moving target.
Yeah.
Chief's been working on this.
Yeah, Motorola is very frustrating because they, they kind of have a corner on, you're the Motorola or your apps on right now. Yeah. Motorola, that's, that's a good product.
Do they charge in interest or cost of money for the five-year plan?
It's another different animal. You get charged more if you pay upfront versus taking their payment plan.
So why wouldn't we do the payment plan? I mean, that's why, first question when you said that, now doubly, I'm really wondering why.
Well, I don't think it's, I'm trying to remember if it's.
Yeah, I think this is one where we decided that we were just gonna, yeah, we'll be on your payment plan and then we just paid off a month later.
Yeah, yeah, you, yeah, you, I mean, you go on the payment plan, but you.
They want you on the payment plan because it's.
So, so, yeah, if you were to just buy the cameras, it's more expensive than saying, hey, I'll, I'll buy it over five years, but you're allowed to pay for it all five years old.
Yeah, it sounds like a used car to you.
It's off.
New car.
Oh, yeah. Oh, there you go. Yeah, this is kind of insane. Yeah, and that is a conglomerate of Motorola.
I like the, I mean, the bright light is the three-year, like, refresh, because we take that approach of like what we're seeing with the drums, where they're like, hey, we know in five years, this stuff's all out.
And that's included in the contract.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's keep going. We're, we're an hour in now. Beer tax?
Oh.
Yeah, I think beer tax is still crossing two nine there. Well, we got seven.
Yeah, you're on stuff for beer tax.
Yeah, we, yeah, we got one.
All right. These are should be fast.
Yeah, beer tax funds, this referred to grant funds that are distributed according to alcohol sales in the city. The one thing about this is we, we can kind of guess what we might get based on, on what we've gotten in the past, but, but it is, it's hard to know, it's a little bit uncertain to know what, what's gonna be, but we can use the funds to, anything that can, as you see there, promote the reduction of the harmful effects of substance abuse or consumption of alcohol products and minors. And so we can use these funds to put equipment in cars, buy alcohol testing devices or drug testing devices, anything that can help us further the enforcement of these things. We can also, that also includes the state-funded DUI shifts, right?
Well, so we, we have state-funded, but then we receive other funds from the state that then pay through to the city, so more DUI shifts.
What about the DUI checkpoints? We haven't had those for a while.
We have not, but that, those are funded, those are funded by a different one. Highway Patrol helps them, helps us on it, but, but we run it.
How come we haven't had them for a while?
Right now, no judge is willing to give us a photo of it.
It's, it's, yeah, it's been a, yeah, they're, yeah, they've got constitutionally difficult a little bit when it comes to checkpoints.
Do we have to get that through a second district judge?
Yeah.
Got a connection for you?
No, I was just wondering who signed up on it.
Yeah.
Yeah. We don't have any changes in what we anticipate there for those.
Good school crossing?
Okay, our school crossing program, we're putting crossing guards at eight crossings and we employ thirteen part-time crossing guards. Louisa McDonald's our coordinator, she does the day-to-day supervision management of the program. No changes in the, in the budget except for unless you want to talk about the wages.
Yeah, we're, so we're bumping everything up fifty cents, so the starting wage is gonna stay the same, but the top out's gonna go around fifty cents. And we, we, we've always just done, our last many years, done about fifty cent a year increase for every year that they've been. We're just gonna recognize those crossing guards who've been with us for a long time, they're extremely valuable.
We have a few.
Yeah.
Been there a long time.
And, and we just wanna, wanna stay competitive as well in the market.
One of the challenges with each city is maintaining a, a good school crossing program, and so paying an extra fifty cents to not have to go out is well worth it. Many cities struggle recruiting and we don't have that.
We're in a great place.
So I don't wanna mess with that. So it's, I don't, I don't know if it's much being competitive more than just recognizing their loyalty and, and their experience and their relationship they've developed with the kids and schools.
That, and I think the fact that it's kind of morning time and then afternoon time like that's.
It's awful.
That, you've gotta do something to encourage someone to do that, because it's, it's a break.
But it's, but it is only eight crossings, the report, our package has ten different crossings, so it's eight.
Uh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, we have eight crossings, but then change that. Thank you. Good eye. Good eye, Brian. Sorry, didn't get the reference, that's a Brian Regan joke. Okay.
Yeah, on the outlook, we just, we're, if you go to the next one, we just put in there, just if you see Vicki, you know, maybe just give her some recognition for thirteen years, loud service.
We have somebody lined in to replace her?
I, I, it will, it will not be a problem getting a crossing guard moving over her position, but that's gonna probably get open up another spot. And so we'll, we'll look at our subs right now, our, some of our substitutes, we have a couple of them, may wanna move up to a full-time position, maybe. So, yeah, it's, it's, we've been lucky the last couple of years, we haven't had to go out and search for the crossing guard.
We only have three substitute crossing guards for all the crossing guards, so that can be really hinky, you know, I mean, somebody's gotta be there. Louisa is amazing, if there isn't a substitute, she's so kind to run right out and do it if you had an emergency. But two of our crossing guards are retired men, I would be very surprised if either one of them wants a regular crossing guard. We have a lady, and I don't know enough about her, but whether she would be interested, but I know the guys actually just do it out of the goodness of their heart. They are not there for the money, in fact, one of them tried to do it without getting paid, so they're amazing and they save our lives, but we only have three, which sometimes makes it really rough and, but they are all great.
I just wanna correct only one little thing that you said, I think you're all doing it out of the goodness of your heart. I, I appreciate that you're there and hit those kids across the street safely.
Yeah, it's a big ask for people to do a part-time job that muddles up your morning and afternoon.
Well, and the hardest part is, I'll be honest, me job, you can be a few minutes late if something's really important, I mean, you know, Nate calls and says, my kid's just fallen down the sidewalk, but I can tell you, there have been times I've walked out of a family emergency because I had to be there, I mean, you can't be one minute late because your kids are in the middle of the road. And so that is the part, and if you can't get a substitute, it's, you know.
Right, yeah, if the crossing guard isn't there, our phone lines light up.
Real pretty fast.
Yeah.
Canine.
Yep, I had it. Okay, so just real quick, introduce the two, our two canines. Raina is our German Shepherd, she's a specialist in drug detection handled by Officer Robinson. And Maya is our bloodhound, she's a specialist in human tracking and handled by Officer Shittit. And we, we love our canines, they're, they're side emotional support, de facto emotional support animals too, so. One thing about the, the budget here was, we've been buying the food and the vitamins for the dogs out of our miscellaneous supplies line, and we felt it would be clear if we had a separate line for the food and vitamins, so we, we, I calculated kind of how much we're spending on that, broke it out into its own line, estimating twenty-three hundred a year for both of the dogs, and then reduced the miscellaneous supplies down to five hundred. So the total increase for the dogs.
We were getting donations as well, okay?
So we have been getting donations, but, but we weren't anymore, and so we had this, just sort of the cost of the food into our budget for basically reason why.
Maybe we need to put that out there, how many, there are a lot of people that would go to our, to our dogs. They weren't donating to the officer for that, they were donating to the dogs, they want some animal.
Yeah, this, this was a program that was being run through a vet and I think ultimately it came down from a dog food distributor, that, that dried up and, yeah, so, yeah, I think we have a good program right now, buying it, paying for it, and shipping right to the officer's home.
And it gives them a lot of ability to choose the right food for the dogs' digestive systems, keep them healthy. I mean, I'm joking, but they eat better than we do, but, but, you know, their, their system needs to be top, top-notch, they need to be healthy and ready to roll, and so the handlers can get them onto correct food. If you take a donation, sometimes it just like comes as a food, like, I was thinking.
Yeah, we take a monetary donation, but not.
Monetary, monetary. The wage.
What about veterinary services?
So there is a line item for that, our dogs have been very healthy, which we're grateful for, but Raina is, is getting aged, but the regular visits and stuff covered in there.
That's in this budget? Is that under professional services?
That's clear.
And anything we can do to save like the dog's hips, that saves us a lot of money in the long run, because that's usually what retires is all about, you can't get it out of cars anymore. So any of these vitamins, anything we do to, to save those. Yeah.
There.
All right. All right, you got two travelers?
Um, just a little, just wanted to give you a little information, that Officer Robinson and Canine Raina recently participated in the Las Vegas Canine Trials, where they competed against canines from a rural country, and they took fourth place. They're typically first place here in Utah, so to go to another state and get fourth, we're pretty proud of that, and it was honestly just like one little tiny mistake that caused them from first to fourth, so they almost had first on that one, but we're super proud of them and their work and their, you know, Raina's a great tool to help us get drugs off, off the street. And then, you know, Maya, no doubt, can help us save lives because she can search for any type of person, doesn't have to be a criminal case, can be, you know, any type of mental health or, or any type of at-risk case, and, and she's great, so, we love. Last one?
Dare.
Dare's the last one?
Yeah.
Okay, Dare, we have no changes there. Officer Casey Scott is our, our Dare instructor and our doubles as our school resource officer at the junior high, supervised by Sergeant Damon. No changes in the, in the budget there, so the highlights just kind of shows you what the lines are, what he uses them for. We're, we think it's an important program, we'd like to keep it going, we love having the officer in the schools, interacting, teaching a curriculum to the, to the kids, and all the budget goes to, towards that.
Yeah, it's a, yeah, at the, the Dare program, SRO program is a, it's all about wages, it's not about money and buying things, just having the officer in the school and interacting with the kids, that, that's what's important. The, the little Dare stickers and pencils and stuff, I don't know if that does much of anything, right, that doesn't keep kids on. But the interaction with the officer, that relationship they build is invaluable, it will pay off for, and has paid off for decades now.
We recently had a, when I was still in detectives, we had a case involving a, a young woman who, I can't remember, she had been involved in something and she would not talk to anyone except Officer Scott, and so, you know, we assigned him the case, so.
So, I mean, and, and the school district does pay up some money every, every year towards the program, it's not a lot, twenty-some thousand dollars a year. It's a good collaboration between us and.
Half the wage for school in session, I believe, is the calculation.
Right, I, I think he's, he's in the schools at least twenty hours a week. The other time, he's, he's running cases, he keeps track, he keeps tabs of our sex offenders, he does the tobacco and alcohol compliance checks, he does other programs.
And animal control, it's done by the county in a special service district, which is awesome, they don't have to manage animal control, so pay attention to that on your property, Dexter, and talk to them if you have concerns. And we do work with the animal patrol, obviously, on a number of complaints and concerns with our residents.
Right.
I think we've gotten a very good serving pattern.
Thanks, Chief Lieutenant. Are we going to parks and parks committees or are we going to community service?
We're going to parks.
Parks.
Okay, page thirty-six, everybody.
Bruce, you good to go?
Sure.
Will you brief compare, talk about your job again? Talk about the custodian job, huh?
Sure.
Bringing up your list?
I can keep it prepared right now.
Bruce, I didn't even see you hiding in the corner up there.
I know, they're spread around the room tonight, you gotta be on a.
You all right?
Creepily scattered around the room.
Here it comes. I'd like to kind of hurry through my, my regular parks operations budget, there, there's not a lot of exciting, a couple of things that I will highlight, but then I have a couple of other things I would like to spend a little bit of time on, budget-related, of the current budget here. But so, let's first keep going on thirty-sixth and, and maybe if we just go to the highlights, there we go. As you, as you go down, there's, there's some things we've reduced, some things that have stayed the same, and some things have gone up, things that we've talked about, sewer, sewers went up. One of the things is, I, I noticed medical insurance, our department's pretty, pretty cheap, we have two, there's five total of us, maybe I should go back to the organizational chart first, there's five of us in the Parks Department, myself, Michael Higgins, the Parks Supervisor, Tyler West, our, our irrigation specialist, Bob Richardson, J.C., and then we have a part-time mechanic. J.C. and Tyler just use the single-person's medical insurance plan and, and Bob does not take advantage of his wife has insurance, so, so we, we're pretty cheap in, in insurance area, so, and even though we, we pass it budgeted for those, I think that was one of the areas where we were able to make a cut and, and make some savings, because they, they don't use as much medical insurance as, as others.
And Haley's on your staff too?
Yeah, it's like a different budget, though. Yeah. And so, so that's the other part.
Did you do that on purpose to get out of this? Call me out here to six forty.
Um, let's see, the, the, the big one, if you go back to the highlights, the big one is, is you'll see quite an increase on the park maintenance. Let's see here, two pictures, this is Porter Walton Park, a before and after picture of, of the rubber surface after several years starts to deteriorate and, and needs to be patched and repaired and that shows it need repaired. In an effort to not let it get in disrepair like that, there's a conditioning that we can do every two to three years, where they basically just kind of clean it all off and re-coat it with a binder, glue, it's, it's very expensive to do that, I got a quote for it this last year, it's fifty-nine thousand dollars, so you'll see, that line item is sixty thousand dollars, that's, that's almost all, having all of our rubber playground surfaces conditioned, so that, that is probably one of the, the big ones that are the, the highlight that I wanted just to point out, that's why that jumped up. The others are, are just the usual, irrigation water costs have gone up a little bit, except your IT services.
The IT services is seven thousand higher.
And that, and that's, I don't know.
That's a cemetery software.
Yeah, cemetery software, sure.
So our current software is no longer being supported, it's ran on an old version of, it can only be ran on an old version of Windows, so we have a very old computer that's operating it. That version of Windows will no longer be supported in October, so we'd really like to move on that as soon as possible. We've done a couple demos and. and, uh, I believe we'd like to stick with Special Generations, which is the software we use now, that moves to a cloud-based software.
And, yeah, and I, I didn't realize that was, that was-
What do, what do we use that software for? Just in terms of plot maps?
Plot maps. This will, this will be actually a nice upgrade, because it'll be cloud-based, and citizens can pull up our cemetery map, search a name or a date, and pull up a grave location, and take them right through with G.I., GPS coordinates and everything.
So, that was gonna be my next question, is there a reason why we, we wouldn't have Mike Smith do something like that for us?
Mike Smith sat in on, we interviewed with a couple of different companies, and Mike Smith even said that, one of the companies that, that we just did a demo with, he's like, "I could do everything they're offering, we should really look at what this other company's offering." They have all of these things that, that are, that are special, unique, and worth of the money.
Okay, right, right.
Right, it's like, what they're offering really isn't anything special, that's something I could throw together for you, you know, with some time.
Right.
And, and so, yeah, so he's in on our, on our interviews and making recommendations.
So, the, the annual cost of that is, uh, one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars, but the implementation is what, it's so much higher this year?
Right, it looks like it's seven grand or so.
Yeah, uh, yeah, fifty-seven.
And a big part of that software is-
Fifty-seven hundred plus the thirteen hundred.
Thirteen, yeah.
Yeah.
The record-keeping information, things that, that then goes on county and all those sorts of things.
And we'll just have a link on our website, is to that, I assume?
Yeah, yeah. People, it'll be great, and all my employees can search something, you know, quick and find a grave fast, too, with a cloud-based app. So, that's what makes, so people have to come to City Hall to print off a map. Even our, even our headstone guides, I mean, put a headstone that could pull it up and look it up, and not have to come and bother front-end staff or a map to know where they gotta go put it. As you look down the list, is there anything else you have questions on in, in this parks' operating budget? If not, let's go ahead, up to the, um, capital projects and, and-
Hey, Bruce, just one second. What is, what's covered under professional services?
So, anytime I have to hire a professional company, uh, tree, tree removal was one of the big ones this last year. We, we had a couple of different hazard trees, we had to pay companies to come and remove, we had to remove a couple of trees in order to get the batting cages put in.
So, third-party contractors?
Third-party contractors, yeah, it could be plumbers, could be electricians, could be roofers. Um, we actually could pay, uh, yeah, we paid a couple of different companies a regular service. So, page fifty-nine, fifty-nine, you've got parks, capital projects. You see, the, I don't know what is court resurfacing. Those are our, our tennis courts and existing pickleball courts, that same thing with, if we do, every so many years you need to do a, a resurfacing. We've actually got really great life out of the smooth park tennis courts. They're needing it now, but it's been quite a few years since, since those were installed and have not had a, a, uh, conditioning done. Island views are newer, but unfortunately, we have snowboarders that like to use the tennis court as their landing path. And so, due to, due to that, we, we have some extra wear and tear damage on the, on the courts that are newer coats, but they, they too are at that three or four-year range when, when it's reasonable to, to do some court resurfacing. So, so that, that's what that will be. Item number two is, um, we, we've master-planned a, an extra restroom to put down on the southwest corner of the community park, where our expansion soccer fields are. We have a little pavilion down there. When we built that pavilion, we stepped off sewer and water for putting in a prefab restroom. And, so that's, that's what that is, 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 uh-
Where would we locate that?
By the tinky pavilion, so right by the tinky pavilion, next to the walking, between the walking path and the tinky pavilion. We, we, we put the pavilion where it is with the idea of, this is where we'd like to put a prefab restroom that makes it convenient for all those, right, so tonight, you've got, uh, recreation soccer going on, and they use our expansion fields, and there's hundreds and hundreds of kids that are down there tonight with their parents, and a video needle bathroom, they've gotta hike over to the center of the park, or up to, up to the east side. So, it, it, for that reason, it really would be convenient to have a closer, and actually, right now, we have a porta potty there, it's been all winter, they will be taking away as quick as all of our restrooms are open, so. But that's, that's where that's planned to go, that's how much they cost. It'd be similar, the top of Island View has a prefab restroom at the top of Island View Park, so it'd be similar to that southwest corner.
By the wetland there.
Southwest, yeah, yeah, southwest corner, yeah, southwest corner up there. Item three is, uh, community park infill fencing. If you're familiar with our, our ballpark, we have four ballfields. They all have nice backstops with dugouts, and then next to the dugout is a nice big opening that's great for maintenance and use, but our risk management team has said that's dangerous, that someone's throwing a, throwing a ball to first base and the first baseman misses it and it goes out and, and the sidewalk could, could injure someone, so they've, they've asked that we enclose all those openings.
I've almost been hit a couple times, so I totally support this.
He, he supports it, he's on the gas.
It's awful.
Only almost, almost.
What's happening is we have all the parents line up on the start of the dugout, all the way to the gas.
Yeah, they'll, they'll line up with, yeah, with lawn, lawn chairs and things, et cetera. I think, I think the only reason why we haven't had issues is because we have young kids, young age, we play, so not a lot of them are, they're, they're, it's all they can do to get the ball to first base, so not a lot of them are rocketing it over-
But it's the older kids who practice on the ballfields that are really become problematic.
So, you, so I see, you, you've noticed it.
Oh, yeah.
So, that's what that is, is that's enclosing all of those, those openings on each of those four fields. There's eight openings, and, um, there will still be a, a man gate that people can walk in and out of, but the, the large opening will be closed, and my maintenance staff will just have to go up and down the corridors as they, uh, drag those fields.
Other, other baseball fields have those. Uh, the Farmington specifically has those gates there, so that will prevent-
My favorite part is when there's a foul ball and it goes to the trees and you have no idea where the ball's gonna go.
Everybody tells you to head up.
You're like, you know, can't do anything.
Any questions on those?
Why did Brad Axe community park playground?
Because we're doing it right now?
It's, it's-
That's already-
It's in, yeah.
Oh, this other one?
I see another one that was axed.
We don't have the funds, so we prioritize the restrooms.
There.
Right, yeah.
Elevator, why did I access? We prioritize the restrooms.
Did I get that wrong?
No. Ron Swanson over here, ask him.
In that, yeah, in that same area, where the restroom is pavilion, there's also an area that we've, that's been master-planned to put a small playground on that southwest corner of the park also, for little brothers and sisters of kids that are playing soccer can play on.
And if we get a renewal on rap tax, that'll be-
Similar, it'd be smaller in size. We, uh, we think we need to put something really fun there, so that they don't have, wanna go up to the big new playground that's a class. So, there needs to be something that is really fun, but it will be much smaller in scale.
Right.
And that'll, that, that'll be in my future, that'll be a future one there. Flip, flip over the page, page sixty, down towards the bottom, you'll see parks, capital, equipment, capital projects. Item number one is a, is, I should preface this, all, all of these are just replacing existing equipment.
But please share how old they are when you do this, too, if you would, because I think that's what's daunting with this list, is how-
Okay, uh, oh, boy, it's not written down in that. The John Deere mower is eight years, nine years old? Uh, the Toro Z Master is, um, probably eighteen years old.
Wow, two thousand eight.
Two thousand eight.
On the John Deere or the?
On the Toro, you don't have one for the JD.
I'll, I'll take your approximation. I'm guessing-
We're, we're ten years or older, basically.
We're getting great, we're getting great life out of our commercially-
And I appreciate Bruce really isn't pushy with his equipment, like some department, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. But Bruce really is, he just makes things work, in all honesty, he makes things work.
Well, our, our part-time mechanic-
We have a great part-time mechanic.
Keeps things running.
But there is some level of, we, it's just getting a little bit more expensive to maintain, parts aren't available. And so, when Bruce had this list, I'm like, we've gotta, we've gotta fund these.
Actually, the John Deere mower, um, we actually already auctioned it off and got rid of it, because it was blowing smoke, and it, we're like-
Cory was disappointed.
We're like, we need to just get rid, get rid of this while we still, while we still can.
Is either gonna be made in this budget, or is it gonna be in this year's budget amendment?
Right.
But, uh, yeah, it was our, it was, it was needing an engine rebuild or replacement. We thought, let's just auction it off, it's, it's, you know, eight, eight years old.
Two thousand, two thousand, oh, yeah, it was eight, nine years old, something like that.
Yeah, yeah. The, the Jacobson that we're, that we're also reflecting, replacing with is Toro Z Master. So, to replace the Jacobson, it's a, it's a gang mower that has the big wings that come down. They're a hundred and twenty thousand. Um, it has an eleven-foot cut. This Toro's come out with a new mower that's a, it's designed like a zero turn. It has a twelve-foot cut, it has wings, but it has a twelve-foot cut, and, um, they're, they're, um, sixty-four thousand eight, that's a quote, a, a price of sixty-four thousand eight forty-one, so it's a half, fifty percent. We think we can do the same job that we're doing with the, the big Jacobson that we're retiring with this, uh, different model type mower.
The Jacobson has some transmission issues, some wheels don't turn, so you can't put it on hills.
It is, it, it's, we kept it a few years too long. We, we shouldn't have kept fixing it up, we should have gotten rid of it a couple of years ago, but it, it is, you say two thousand eight to him by us?
Yes.
So, yeah, so we're, we're-
Thank you.
Seventeen, eighteen years on, on that.
Making a difference.
And then, a couple of, these are just push, walk-behind snowboers that, um, are just up, they're, same thing, they're, they're-
Twelve years old.
A twelve-year mark. Um, and then, and then, item number four, we're replacing our oldest truck. It's, it's really the, it's eighteen years old. It used to be Kenny Williams, if you remember, it used to be our street, it used to be his truck.
Eighteen years old?
He handed it down to the parks department, we've, we've been using it, and the-
Twenty-one years.
Oh.
You put eighteen on your list, but if you're sending it to two thousand and four, that's twenty-one.
Oh, twenty-one years. See, that's what we have for count.
Kenny's gonna buy it.
So, unless you have any questions-
You should donate it to Kenny, this-
It has a hundred, it, we don't put a lot of miles on it, because they never leave Centerville, but it, it has a hundred and eighteen, hundred and twenty thousand miles on it, which is a lot for a city truck. Uh, unless you have any other questions, that's all I have on, on capital equipment, capital, capital, um, projects. But then I, I do have a couple other items I'd like to talk about, unless you have other questions on my, on my budget. We, we, you, as the city council, decided it would be wise to get the parking lot expansion done along with pickleball courts. But if you remember, our pickleball court, um, budget was very high, and it got cut down, and one of the things that was cut out of the pickleball budget, um, was all the landscaping around it. There's, there's no money for sprinklers, grass, uh, anything around, around the, um, so, uh, city council, go ahead, like, pictures of the end. These are, right against, these are the new pickleball courts, and they're gonna be awesome. They're gonna be, they're gonna be state-of-the-art areas, you'll be envious. When they're painted, they're gonna be beautiful. Uh, these are the little areas just right next to the post-tension concrete, that, um, we'd like to put in some astroturf, artificial turf, they, uh, provide irrigation and keep water and, and debris off the courts. Um, so, uh, I'd like to, I've gotten some contractors that are giving me bids on putting astroturf in, in these gaps and these areas. And then, next slide, this area will be grass. Uh, this is the south end of the courts, and this is the east side of the courts. Um, that's all been kind of just rough-graded by the contractor, which was part of his contract, but there's no, there's no money or funding or anything, and we're just gonna have mud, and every time it rains, it's gonna get tracked under our beautiful new courts if we don't put in some sprinklers and some grass and finish this off. So, um, when we sent out to bid the parking lot, um, our engineer's estimate was three hundred and fifty thousand to, for the parking lot, and the city council agreed, okay, let's, let's go for it, set it up to bid. Um, we got a low bid, we had, we had lots, we had, fortunately, we had, I think, eleven bidders, and four or five of them were over the estimate, but the low bid was two fifty-two. We were more than a hundred thousand dollars, or a hundred, I guess a little less.
Ninety-eight thousand.
Ninety-eight thousand dollars less than our engineer's estimate. Um, so we, we saved that money, so to speak. I'm wondering if it would be possible to, knowing that we saved so much on this parking lot, if we could put a little money into finishing, because you're gonna, you'd be cutting a ribbon on some beautiful courts, and people are gonna be walking through the dirt to, to come and see your beautiful courts and, um-
One, one quick clarification, we didn't necessarily save anything, because we actually didn't officially budget for this. So, there was a budget amendment that we were anticipating three fifty, but it was two fifty-two, so it's less than what we were anticipating.
Okay.
So, we haven't officially saved anything, however, it's-
It's a lower budget. That's how my wife explains it to me when she gets a, gets a really good deal of how much money we saved.
I mean, I still support the idea, I'm just trying to make sure for record.
Maybe that's where you're going next, Bruce?
I, I'm getting some quotes right now. I, I think it's gonna be around twenty thousand to, to do the irrigation and the grass and things. But, um, I might add, right now, in my current budget, I have fifty thousand dollars budgeted to put sprinklers and grass in the, the Randall property right here next to City Hall. We could keep tilling that and maintaining the weeds, the weeds in that property, and use that money for finishing off pickleball courts, and then next year, um, budget for, for finishing off that Randall property.
Councilor Makeham wants both.
I would say both.
I, I think it's a waste of money to irrigate and put grass.
Can we?
But, why don't we just, we'll do a budget for this year, we'll see where we are with the budget, but is it okay if we try and squeeze in on this year and just get both?
I'm fully supportive.
Did you say we have fifty thousand this year for Smith Park?
It's currently budgeted right now, before July.
I'm supportive of switching that over to the pickleball courts.
Me, too.
We're gonna try and do-
I'm not, I'm not sure I'm mad on this budget yet, so I'm not gonna weigh in on, like, I don't know that I'm comfortable approving.
Well, as of right now, administratively, I'll work with Bruce to figure out what we can do, if we have options.
I, I, I didn't tell Brad.
This is not part of his presentation. I am dying in this.
He's going rogue on you, man. Most of this all just kind of came together today, that I was like, you know, it's never, never.
Administration, Bruce.
I think, you know what, I think we probably didn't remember that, and I think I would've been a little sad to go-
Well, I know we took out the shade structures and the benches.
I know, we, I know we way limited it.
Um, some really good news. Um, I have applied for a grant for, uh, half of the cost of the shade structures and some of the hard benches. Bryce has been working on getting donations, and I think we're up to five, five hard benches have been donated, along with some pickleball court backstops and things. And that brings me to my next point to, to end with, I have some really great news. Uh, we, we also, um, got some money donated by Rocky Mountain Power to buy a batting cage. Uh, unfortunately, the, the cost of the batting cage is, is the least expensive part of the batting cage. The, the concrete was as much, if not more, but we worked it into my, my parks' maintenance budget last year, and got, and, and, you know, were able to get the concrete put, put in, get it all installed. Um, to finish it off right, it, it, we'd like to put astroturf inside the batting cage with the, the home plate and the batter's blocks and things. I've gotten bids from three different companies on what that would cost. Um, the company's doing the playground astroturf right now, bid on, on it, and then we, when they gave us the bid, they was like, ah, that's way out of, you know, we don't have any money to start with, but that's way, way out of what we thought it would be. Um, so they came back, it, it cut three thousand dollars out of it with a bid of eleven thousand dollars. I have a contractor, this commercial flooring source, that they actually have been doing, they're, they have, they're on state contract, and he's a local resident who, um, has done lots of work, this carpet here, and the flooring in there, the, the public works carpeting's all been done through Commercial Floor Source. They usually have the lowest bid and do great work, and I've been really happy with them, working with them over the years. Um, they were one of the ones that gave me the bid on doing astroturf, um, for, uh, the pickleball courts. They came in with a little bid of five thousand, five thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars. Uh, he then said, hey, I've got a couple of questions I want to ask you about. Uh, just a couple, it's a year and a half, two years ago, actually, it's actually been a few more years. They had a, a young adult son die, he was buried in our cemetery. And he said, hey, my wife and I were up at the cemetery, and noticed our headstones sinking a little bit, who do I call for that? And I said, oh, who, who you're through, would you mind the company? And I said, yeah, they usually come out and, they plan on that, on any new stone to level it up. He says, also, we'd like to donate a, a park bench or something in honor of my, my son. And, uh, and I said, oh, you know what, perfect, we're, we're actually on a campaign right now. And he says, maybe we put it in the pickleball courts or something, but we'd just like to do a memorial bench, uh, to honor my, my son's life. And, um, anyways, I said, here, here's a flyer, contact Bryce, you know, he's looking for, for park bench donation. Um, a few minutes go by, and I think, you know what, Bryce has got it all set up great for companies to sponsor, where we put their name, um, and we, we've got them, we're gonna, we're gonna put their names on banners and, and announce them at the Fourth of July, we're gonna, um, announce them at any events we have in the park, and it gives that, whatever company, um, some notoriety, so it gets, gets the, and I was like, that's not what he's looking for, he, he just wants a memorial bench for his- And I was like, that's not what he's looking for, he, he just wants a memorial bench for his son. He's looking to be honored, you know, be sponsor, a sponsor. So I called him back and I said, hey, we have some other memorial benches, if you just want to work with this company and get what it is you want and work with me, I can help get it installed. We can still put it in the pickleball courts if you want, or we could look at putting it up by our, our cremation garden. I said, or, or even another park or around the, around the walking path path. He says, okay, I said, he said, I think, I think we might want to do a couple benches. He says, but that, that's great. And hangs up the phone, fifteen minutes later, he calls me back and he says, hey, you know that court I just gave you for five thousand one sixty-five? I'll just donate that. So, so they've offered to do our batting cage astroturf job and just donate what another company bid at eleven thousand, he bid it at five and he's willing to just do it and donate that. His name's Will Clough, Commercial Floor Source, longtime resident of Centerville and he sent a really nice text to say, and I just want to thank all the employees of Centerville City, all they do for us, again, you know, cemetery, the streets, the parks, all of the city council, everything that you guys do. And so anyway, I thought that was, that's great, great news, so that's.
So is, is, is that in addition to that whole strip on the west side? You do the batting cages as well as the west side?
Just, this is just for the batting.
Okay.
Just the batting cages, but this is not the pickleball courts. I still need to get courts on that. And he, he, he's, he's going to bid on doing the pickleball courts too, but we'll, we will.
Well, are we going to put him on a citizen recognition? If he wants that?
I told him, we'll let him put his, his, either his family name or his business name, whatever, on the batting cage and in the turf.
I was just thinking like a city council.
Yeah, it would be nice, I think, to acknowledge that too. Can we also consider, like, I, I do think it's really great how we're doing this for businesses, but is there a way to, like, let people go in? Like, as far as the shade structures and other things, like, there might be somebody out there that is like, hey, I'd donate a hundred bucks, but I don't have fifteen hundred. I think if we could, like, it would be kind of cool to have a little, some kind of little wall of names or something.
Bryce would be happy to talk about that at future work sessions.
And, and he has some lower price, you have two, there's two hundred and fifty dollars.
I know, I'm on pickleball.
And then are the paddle racks, there's less than that.
Right, it's like if you just have, if you just have an open amount, you might get, you might be surprised what you get.
To be clear, the staff has.
Bryce is really good at that stuff.
We're moving forward with the landscaping, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Administratively, we'll make things work and.
Moving, moving it from Smith Park for now.
I think you'll save yourselves lots of, of whole causes.
Why, why didn't you find better days?
Why didn't you finish the grass? Why is, why is the mud holding up?
Okay, Parks, Parks Committee.
Okay, Parks and Rec Committee.
Page thirty-seven.
It's super, super simple, really, it's just their, their recorder, administrative piece. They deserve a shout out, that they, they, the new playground that's about to open up is their baby. They, they shopped around, they went and visited other playgrounds, they tested, they, they worked with Haley on getting bids from different companies. They picked out the items they liked, they all agreed on things and made the recommendation to you, but we're, we're recommending they host the ribbon cutting because they, the Parks and Rec Committee, they, they, that's, that's their.
And I appreciate a warm out so bad and I have to replace three or four members.
Yeah, they're short, they, yeah, yeah, last night we had a meeting and they couldn't do any official business because they didn't have a quorum because they're down, down a few members. So we'll, we'll add a few new ones to that, they'll get to probably get some of the credit for the past committees that did, did the work to get this new playground installed.
They're wonderful.
Good, good, good people. Trails Committee, same thing, really get, lots, lots of, you've seen their master plan proposal. They, they are gung ho, want to do more than they're doing and, and we'll do as much as we let them, I think.
Have we ever considered with regard to these volunteer committees, throwing in a couple hundred extra dollars into the budgets that we can give people like twenty-five dollar gift cards? Just like a little, thanks so much, right? Like, just a little token of appreciation type thing?
We do, do the appreciation, right?
Yeah, we do, we throw a dinner, so the volunteer dinner. And there's, I think, Bryce does think like that.
A minimum almost for a twenty-five dollar gift card.
I think he does gift cards and things at that dinner too.
Got it, okay. So you're already on top of that. I just want to, I just want to thank the people that are volunteering.
They do a good job, they do the dinner, then they'll, they'll specifically recognize different volunteers from different organizations with baseball or committees or whatever they be. And they'll recognize them with a little, a little pencil set and they'll be able to, or they.
Right, I have a coffee, I actually missed that, I was supposed to be a lot of important, okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
The last one's just the tree word, I think you got a little report from the chairman at your last council meeting and they're great too and they're, they're taking care of my Arbor Day celebration for me every year and I don't have to do that, so that's, that's great. That's one of the requirements of being a tree city, so I appreciate that and we look to their doing. Any other questions, Parks, Rec, Trees?
Yes, trees. On that area just to the east of the pickleball courts. We're just going to, were there any thoughts of putting any trees there or?
To the east?
Yes, to the east of the pickleball.
Do you want to go back to that inner?
Pairs a little bit with the.
We have, we have some mature pine trees, so.
Oh, yeah, I see the pine there.
So you've got here, there's a little bit of a gap here, but this is the entrance into that hill. We, we actually just had to put in a new tough shed that kind of narrowed that entrance a little bit because that's where all the electrical panels are going.
There's no.
There's possible, it's possible we can stick another shade tree in here, so these are all my irrigation boxes underground. Utilities are all right here. Don't want to ring trees. Yeah, we, yeah, because we purposely, purposely are doing the astroturf right against the courts so we don't put debris on the courts.
Right.
But, but yeah, we, I love putting trees anywhere that it'll work. I'm not sure if they'll look right there, but I'll put some other places.
Hey, do we want to talk about the position real quick, Bruce? So last night we had a discussion, council rehearsed and making me weren't here, but we did talk about it, it did come up with that position that is being requested. That essentially a building custodian, I guess, what do we call it?
It's called a building supervisor, yeah, facility supervisor that manages our build, our facility, our office building.
We won't make you go through it again for the three that were here, the laundry list of things that, that Bruce went through that he has to maintain as that person. So ultimately, he's been doing, fulfilling that role for the last nine years or so. And I think he's done a great job fulfilling that role for nine years, but as our buildings are starting to age, all of our buildings are starting to age, there is some need for us to now start looking at how do we maintain them so they last a little bit longer? So we don't have to build a new city hall or build a new, that public works building. So I just want to lead up to that and Bruce has to do an interview.
And he's true, he's right, I, I just started listing all of the different responsibilities that this position would have. Highlights are they would manage the housekeeping contract or housekeeping employees, whichever route you wanted to go. Right, currently, right now, we have two, three part-time janitors that do the housekeeping, basically trash, restrooms, vacuuming, cleaning. This person would ideally be someone that has some experience in, in building maintenance, maybe, maybe has their contractor's license and has basic understanding of plumbing, electrical and, and construction. They would manage the HVAC contract, they would manage the elevator contract, they would manage the housekeeping contract and then they would manage the, the garbage dumpster needs. They would manage the window cleaning and window blind cleaning, the carpet cleaning, all of the different things that the, the surplus furniture, new furniture, all of those different things that need to be managed, ordered, replaced, maintained, would be handled by this building, building maintenance supervisor. Whatever we decide to call it, some, some, some people call it building engineers, some people call it building supervisors.
Facilities maintenance.
Facilities maintenance.
Building maintenance tech. Building maintenance tech.
This is the eighty-one thousand.
So that's on page forty-two for come from my.
Yeah, need checked around other cities to see what that position is paid and that's where we got those numbers from, is from what other cities, cities pay there, building maintenance supervisor.
I did make a call yesterday to some of our property managers who employ these exactly the type of people for our buildings that we own. And this is on par, like, it's a little bit less, but it's in the range, on the lower end of the range of what.
So is it a part-time position?
It would be a full-time, every day there would be someone here, their job would be taking care of the city builds and taking care of all the things the city need, which I, I think will increase the standard of, of, of care, health of this building, the employee satisfaction with their office spaces. I think all of that would improve with having someone who's here every day with their main, their main responsibility is maintaining the city buildings and.
And I suspect we'll see a decrease in, if there's some things that somebody, I just want to be mindful of the side conversation.
Yeah.
What user?
Yeah, exactly. Sure, great, sorry, so.
Robin was asking a question.
Sure, he's going to blame it on me.
I suspect that there'll be some decrease because there might not be a need to bring an HVAC company out who charges us five hundred dollars per visit, that this person might be able to handle that situation if, if they have some knowledge or understanding or the time to actually research and diagnose to Google it and YouTube it. I'm just kidding, man.
Yeah, there is training and schooling for this, this position and, and we'd like to get somebody with that kind of experience or training or schooling that I don't have.
How many buildings are in the, would we be looking at that they would be, would be in their purview? This one obviously.
City Harp, Public Works, the museum.
Concession, the, the deken building and storage building.
We might pull them in with roofing issues or things at the pavilions or the restaurants and parks.
Are you overseeing all of the buildings right now? I, I don't, I'm, I'm contemplating on this, but I guess for me, I really need to be able to defend this and it might be helpful to understand. We've added a few FTEs over the past few years. But have we increased our population or is there some other way to say this is why we need? I get, I get the aging building thing, but I also am very cognizant of the fact that there's a rather large fund balance transfer.
So for me, it's, the, the defense is, and we've heard arguments and frustrations from the community is, we're delaying the need to build a new city hall. This investment is delaying that need for potentially a new eight, ten million dollar city hall.
So can we see?
So our building is thirty, thirty years old this year, right, so.
But when you're calling in the HVAC and whatever, how much is that costing per year? When you're calling in these other services to come in?
Yeah, yeah, so, you're not going to see this like substantial decrease because the, ultimately in what I shared last night is, cities do a terrible job doing, dealing with deferred maintenance. We are not investing and protecting our investments. Cities will just burn, you know, use it till it dies, we demolish it, we build a new one because we don't spend any money maintaining flooring, the walls, the infrastructure, the HVAC, the boiler that we need to replace this year. We are not spending any money. If we'd invested fifty to a hundred thousand dollars every year, this building could last a lot longer. So we don't invest that amount of money. So we're at this point, we're at thirty years, we're starting to see the aging of our buildings and so is it seriously considering a new city hall to just rebuild? Or do we invest in somebody that can actually come in and make recommendations?
I understand, I understand that, but then you're talking about bringing in, you've got to have a new boiler, which that person probably cannot do.
Oh, no, you're, so you're not going to eliminate, but that person, but that person could have said, we need, I could have done this, this and this. And who knows, maybe we don't need a new boiler, we're just being told we need a new one because we're not experts in this, in this field, right? But if you have someone that has a GC or understands this world, then there's preventative things that maybe could prevent this hundred and ten thousand dollar cost.
On this piece, I would really encourage you to go back and listen to the work session.
I will be happy, I will be happy to do so, but we have brought on quite a few FTEs recently and I am getting to, I am to the point where I'm like, hey, we have to, like, pick and choose a little bit. I'm not saying this can't be the person, but we also need another police officer and at some point, I, I'm really concerned about the fund balance transfer amount this year.
I just wonder on this one, and I was there for the work session, I appreciate what Bruce has done and your Parks and Rec, the department have not necessarily made the supervisor. But I just really question the amount of buildings we have, a, a full-time person. I mean, it seems like to me it could be done ten to twenty hours a week, but, you know, you save that full-time equivalent, all the health insurance, everything else, if you, if you got a part-time person that's doing it.
Okay, so thinking of that, if it's not necessarily a part-time need, I mean, is it a property management? Is that some, is that a thing, Spencer?
I don't know.
Or are we getting to eighty thousand really quickly?
I mean, you're going to pay on an hourly basis, anywhere between a very green maintenance tech, thirty-two dollars an hour regardless, up to fifty dollars, maybe even sixty bucks an hour. So if you compute that, depending on your needs, but you're going to have to have them going through on a regular rotation, checking all your HVAC, because again, this person, to Brad's point, at least in my experience and the description we had on Tuesday night, isn't a person that's going to be replacing your boiler. They're not replacing.
Right.
Chiller, but they are going through and they're checking your VAV boxes, they're going through and doing all your filter replacements, they're changing out your light bulbs, they're fixing a leak in your toilets or your sinks. So they're kind of like, handyman is a way, is a way to, it's not a handyman, it is more than a handyman. But those types of skills.
Not, not disagreeing, I'm just saying, hey, we're jumping from, I mean, I know Bruce is.
You're jumping, you're almost creating a whole new position.
You're creating a full-time position, would we be able to, because at fifty bucks an hour, it's fifty-two thousand a year if you have them here twenty hours a week, would that be enough?
And I'm, I'm concerned about it too, I'm concerned. Is he just going to be here like?
Once you've got a full-time person here, they're here. So if we tried it for a year, we might go, hey, you know what, twenty hours a week is enough.
And so I, what I was.
Or ten hours.
An answer to your question, I don't know, there are probably companies out there that we can contact that would have a property management service. I don't know how many there are for government entities. When I'm thinking, I mean, I'm living in the world I live in, but when you think about, like, the school district, I'm sure the school district has loads of maintenance techs that are doing just like school repairs, whether it be HVAC or electrical or plumbing or whatever else it might be. It would be interesting to see in the public world if there is a property, a private property management company.
Right.
That sourced them out on a third-party base. I, I don't know the answer to that question.
As I'm looking at this.
Because I think that's what you're asking.
Yes, that is what I'm asking.
Yeah.
So as I'm looking at this, is this, as I'm looking at city hall, is this the one employee for eighty-one thousand? But then do you have additional FICA, part-time, what's the part-time wages? Retirement, medical insurance, is that for the one person?
I was, I was reading it out, I thought the differential was ten.
It's a hundred and thirty-five thousand, really.
No, you have three part-time people that, that's the only way.
You're still wanting a janitor, I mean, this guy's, to me, I feel like he's coming in just to delegate out the other work. I mean, yes, he might change the light bulb, but that's a lot of money for a light bulb changer, I would rather have one person.
Okay, can I step in just for a second? So, so it's not just delegating, it's not just someone come in and deciding where people go. This is, this is where we work and our building is failing us, right? I mean, our, we're fifty-six degrees in our offices. Things are failing, the carpet needs to be replaced, walls, we've got serious issues with city hall, not just city hall, public works, but we've got serious remodeling happening that needs to happen. There are serious issues, this is where we live a lot of time and we're telling you that as much as, if, if Bruce doesn't get a building facilities ma, then I'm going to be requesting somebody in parks because parks demands are increasing. And, and right now Bruce is being taken away from dealing with parks to deal with buildings.
Let's not take it extreme, Brad. Nobody said, nobody said.
Nobody's disagreed with any of that.
Nobody said that we didn't, we wanted the building to remain fifty-six degrees. We're looking for a solution of potentially either a full-time person or a contracted service or a part-time. We are not saying that we want to leave you freezing, so let's not go extreme.
Oh, no, no, but what I'm telling you is, I'm just trying to give you and set the stage that what we work in is not just delegating and saying that, just have, there are serious issues and we need someone to come in that's an expert to say, this is the issue with city hall. And if you want this building to be extended, here are the things we need, right?
And we want that too, we're just looking.
Okay, so.
I don't think we have a definite that this is the way to go, we put it in the budget.
I'm asking for additional solutions and one of the reasons why.
But we're looking for potential solutions.
Is because if you hire, like, for example, when we, when we use Kevin Campbell, he brings behind him a bunch of, he has a bench, right, of expertise? Where a company may also have a bench of expertise that actually does save us more money. I want both looked at because you're asking me to support an FTE, which is a, after that, it's in the, it's in the budget and we have to do it. I want to try something or at least have the opportunity to review that before we're hiring another FTE because I, we're getting, you know, we're, I, I'm really concerned about this fund balance transfer.
Do we know what other cities of similar sizes and facilities do for building maintenance? Based off of our relationships or our contacts, do we know what, I know K-Zone Farmington are, are larger.
They're larger.
But.
That's a really good thought.
I don't, I don't know what they do, I, I just don't live in that public world.
And I'm not saying it's not an FTE at all. I'm just saying, I, I really have to, it's really helpful to me when I, when I'm looking at the budget to say, hey, we, okay, we looked at everything. We looked under the rug, we picked, we looked at every option and this is the best option for the city.
Well, I'm agreeing with you and I'm looking at, I, I don't want you here in fifty-six degrees either, but.
Of course not.
We need to have a full-time person here or, because this guy is going to be delegating a lot. He's not going to be able to do everything. So if he's here.
So managing, managing.
Managing, okay. So if he's here twenty hours and yet he's getting the people to fix the problems, I don't know that he needs to be full-time.
Or she.
I think.
Thank you, Brad.
Or they.
We need him to, you know, to hire the people to, to fix our problems or, or come to us and say, okay, this room needs new carpet and.
Okay, so part of it is like, so when, right now, we have somebody come in for HVAC and Bruce is meeting with them. This person could be totally taking us for a ride because we're not the expert.
Right.
You need this and it's going to cost you twenty thousand dollars. Bruce's knowledge is not necessarily, as much as he's done a great job getting, learning and knows more than many of us. He can't challenge and say, well, wait a minute, do I really need that and can I do that myself, right? That, that's such, it's not just managing and is that something this person can do themselves?
Well, I agree with that, but I think it could be done on twenty hours a week as opposed to being a full-time.
And, and it's possible. I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn it over to Mike real quick because he's been standing for a while.
Oh, I just stretched my back.
Well, I just.
It should look like.
Seems, seems how, you know, I'm standing anyway. So a couple of things, I'm not going one way or the other with what you're saying and whether to hire somebody for some backup. Want to give you a couple of examples right off the bat. You know, when we got into the Public Works, nobody was taking care of the furnace filter, you know what I mean? It just didn't happen and we ended up with a lot of costly repairs on furnace filters. So it, it involved that my mechanic started changing the furnace filters, which was fine. But then again, I'm not going to hold him accountable because that's not his job assignment. Couple of other things that he's, over the years is, is the roll-up doors that we have down there are extremely expensive. And, you know, it's not, he's not over the buildings, but we're having him line up to do the maintenance on it to save the city coffers, to save them on diet. So there are things that we try to do, but there's no way I can go back to him and say, did you get the maintenance done? Because he just was taking it on his own to do it. And, you know, Bruce is, Bruce needs help from all of us guys at Public Works to fix things, do whatever to keep everything going. And I, I think that's what you lose and that way you go part-time and you write up a description, what have you. But you've really got to have somebody that's accountable to making sure things are happening. You know, it's like the fire alarm in the Public Works building.
Right. That would be another, another contract he's managed, the fire, all of our fire extinguishers have to be checked every year and registered. All of our, uh, sprinkler system has to be checked and redone and contract them with that.
You can look back, find some research. Scott Schultze was what you were saying is a part-time, correct anybody that was here?
Right. We, we hired a part-time guy.
We had a part-time guy.
We sent him to HVAC school.
Uh, yeah, we sent him to school and then he goes out and goes to.
An HVAC company hired him away because he got his credentials.
So I mean, there's a lot of pros and cons. I really do believe you need to look at it.
You know, and, and some history too, um, and I think this would help when, when you're justifying it to a citizen or someone is. We, we had, we had a small city hall and, and we didn't have a Parks and Rec building. We didn't have the storage facility or the deken building. We didn't have the museum. We didn't have the addition of the police station. All of those things have been added on it and we just had Randy Randall kind of looked at what Public Works building needed. I kind of took care of the things my building needed. Blaine Lutz kind of kept an eye on things here at city hall and kept track of the things that city hall needed. But as we had grown, none of, like you said, none of us, that was our expertise and we were all just doing this kind of on the side of helping out. Hiding, getting bids and contractors to come in and do things.
Who maintains our HVAC contract across our buildings?
We, we don't have one across the buildings. We have a contract here at city hall. And at the other.
What about like a plumbing contract that checks all of our?
And, and we, we had a employee that retired last year, was a, used to be a plumber, uh, uh, that retired. And we just would have him do a lot of things and I, I call in plumbers to do things that I can't do myself. I just think your standard of care would, would increase your, your work satisfaction of all your employees that live in these buildings would increase if you had someone with that knowledge and expertise. And I'm not saying that it has to be a full-time, uh, person, but I, I do think you need to look at someone. I'm spending probably close to twenty hours a week just doing not enough. So I think if you want to reach that level of it's enough, I think you need some more than what I'm, I'm able to give.
Well, then too, is I think too is, what you're hoping is if you do the maintenance on whatever it is, whether it's the furnaces or the garage door, that you're recouping some of that money back that you wouldn't be spending. Hope, hopefully it would sway up to where you're making money off of the guy. I mean, that would be the ideal if you could make it. But the bottom line is it's, you know, Bruce has got his focus on, you know, parks, I got my focus on the streets. You really need somebody that's focused on, I want to make that last as long as it can. And we, you know, I mean, with Randy, Randy was pretty handy to fix anything. You know, sometimes we have to redo things.
It's now, now a problem. A bigger problem than what was that.
I'm not saying anything. He did a great job. He did, brought a lot to the city. But I mean, it was too, Randy was handy to fix things just to get it working, but. I don't, I'm not dropping Randy.
Based on what we have in, uh, for my profession, a Marshall and Swift puts government building based upon how it's built, about fifty to fifty-five years life expectancy. So we're, we're past the point of the halfway point. And so what does that mean? And, and how do we extend the life of the building? Effective age will, by completing and taking care of that deferred maintenance, we can push that, uh, life expectancy a little bit longer. We don't have to take on the big, the big ask, which would be a new city hall. Which I think is, from my, uh, feedback from other, from residents is that's just not something that is in the cards right now, so.
Well, if fifty to fifty-five years is the age, that, it wouldn't even be appropriate. We've got to figure out how to make that last.
Right. If it gets to fifty years, that means it's dilapidated, things are falling apart, we have to bulldoze it.
So I really appreciated your presentation at our last meeting because I did not appreciate, I, I didn't even realize that we didn't have a building maintenance person, right? I didn't realize everybody else was cobbling together and kind of like trying to make it work. So I appreciated that you put that on our radar and the list of things that you identified, which I know we're not going to go through again today, was really helpful. I, I am not, I'm supportive of Gina's proposition of looking and seeing if there's some contract options, why not?
Just, just help us to understand, uh, maybe another option. Then it helps me to be able to say, hey, we looked at a couple of things and this seemed to be the best for our situation.
But I also would love the answer to Spencer's question because if residents are like, why are we doing this? And we're like, well, we're trying to preserve our buildings so that we don't have to build a new city hall. And by the way, every other city that is out there has one of these people and we don't, that is also persuasive to me too.
And I'm not saying that we necessarily, I think what you're, I, I agree with what you're saying is, we're not, we don't want to hire somebody just because everybody else has them. We want to hire them because there's an active need.
What that suggests is that there is a reason that everybody else has that position.
Correct. Yes, there is a reason. Yes, absolutely. Yes.
Here's, here's where I'm coming from on this. So, so just so that staff knows, I'm not trying to be like impossible here. But I, I'm concerned that at some point we have to look at, at a truth and taxation hearing. And when that happens, I will be able to defend what the decisions were that were made. And so that's where I'm at on this. And I'm just gonna, I will turn over every stuff.
Then you looked at those other options.
Yes, that I can, that I can definitively, just like when we had to do this three or four years ago because we had to raise police salaries. It was very easy for me to go right in and say, this is the problem. Do you want to give up your level of safety service in this city? No, I do not. Okay, great. Then we're all on the same page.
And I think where staff's at a disadvantage is, they're probably sitting here saying, we're all doing our jobs. Nobody has time to do this.
Of course.
What do we do?
I'm not suggesting they, I'm not suggesting that we continue to expect, I, so the do-nothing is not necessarily.
Correct. It's their middle class.
The do-nothing is Bruce continues to do what he's doing and everybody else, that to me is not necessarily what I'm asking for. I'm asking for, just give me the data so I can defend it.
Or, or what are our other options?
And if we pull twenty hours away from these guys, I mean, twenty hours is a lot to, to pull away.
Yeah.
From, and take some, some responsibilities off of you and a couple of other people. Twenty hours should help. I will stay from working for the federal government for years. We found with our buildings, one person that really cared is probably better than a company that sends somebody in all the time. You're saying you want somebody that cares, somebody that's familiar, somebody that knows. You know, it is a different guy that they send in and, you know, just like some of ours, we, we have.
And I make a suggestion. I've seen that in our HVAC where when we get a different person on our HVAC. He doesn't have the history, he doesn't care and he's going to be on another job next month and he won't care if he stops up here this month.
I would prefer retire, somebody who maybe has done this and is retired and would like a twenty-hour-a-week job that would love our building and care about it and, and do it right and, and would have the access to the people that, you know, he would have time to, to look in and get a good deal on what we've got.
I'm going to suggest something else.
Okay.
Because we live in a different world of hiring, not that there's anything wrong with hiring an older retiree to kind of love and.
Or experience.
But we are subject to elevator inspections. We're subject to, uh, you know.
Fire systems.
Yeah, fire, fire safety.
Our drinking mountains.
My suggestion would be that we would create some type of an RFP, some kind of a narrative that says, hey, these are our buildings. We're not able to service this really functionally on our own and we'd like to solicit proposals, feedback, whatever else it might be from you as a company, like I've already got four companies here we could reach out to, and say, what would it take you to service these types of tasks? And how many hours a, a week or a month and at what cost? That way, in that way, we could compare.
Is that a fair direction?
And, and hopefully you, you don't, my, my feelings are the way I'm passionate about this is not, it's just trying to get you a sense of urgency to understand that this last year, this last winter, we were done, right?
I, I totally, I want to be sensitive.
So all that, and, and having Bruce do it, I need Bruce, and I've told him this many times, to get in the office and help me with strategic planning, right? Help me with the long-term visioning because he's getting bogged down with his little fires and, and Parks is doing a, a great job with what they have. They haven't asked for a person in a long, long time. So a, as others have added maybe one or two here and there. I have prioritized this over police because I know police needs one too. But at the same time, I think we've kind of been really neglectful of Bruce because frankly, Bruce is a nice guy. And he doesn't ask, just like with the equipment, he doesn't necessarily go out of his way. And so I even told him, plus, I need you to be a little more direct. You tell me what your needs are.
I mean, there is obviously a conflict of interest. I'm saying this, but you can say, you can send an RFP narrative to a group called RBM, CBRE, Colliers, Washbatch and Boyer. That's, obviously we maintain millions of square feet of property and I would recuse myself from that. But those are four quick companies off the top of, of at least my contact's head that we could go out to.
Well, first I'd like to reach out to cities.
Yes, I was gonna say.
Because I don't know if the private sector truly.
I, I understand that too.
I have never seen a contract with a property manager with a city and I've been around a long time.
That's why I asked the question earlier, is the discussion is like, I don't know.
It's not to say that you couldn't do something.
Sure, the state has their own employees.
But you could, but you could reach out to cities of our same size. And by size, I don't necessarily mean population. I mean.
Buildings.
Like buildings.
Yeah.
Well, I don't say, it's Public Works. So Public Works generally has some building tech or some building maintenance person that helps.
So just help us understand what, what they have in other communities. I mean, that is also an approach that I think is helpful.
True.
In the defense of saying, hey, so we haven't had this and we've had this really nice guy that does parks that has been willing to help us.
We've, we've stretched our staff to be on the breaking point.
But we've stretched him too thin and other cities do this.
And we want the building to last. That staff member as well as the staff members in effect by not being able to properly service our.
I just feel like I personally need a, just a little bit more oomph to that. I, I, it's not hard to say, hey, staff was freezing this year. It was, we were here one night when it was very cold. We witnessed it, so nobody's contesting that, but I just.
Yeah, it's not just the cold. It truly is, you know.
Oh, I know. It's all sorts of things.
And, and what I shared last, on Tuesday, I'll share with the two of you.
When I came in that night, got things going and by the time you left the building, it was warming. But, but, but that's a, because I'm salaried, that you don't, that's free. You're not, you're not paying someone to do that, but I, I am spending.
The attitude is free too.
A, a part-time person's hours trying to keep things going with, with the building. There's lots of needs, there's lots of needs.
So it relates to truth and taxation, of off-topic, on-topic. Our fire increase alone would substantiate a truth and taxation hearing irrespective of all of our other city needs.
Believe me, I'm with you. I, that's what I'm concerned about is that it's so, yeah.
That was a discussion after you and Robin left last, on Tuesday night, so.
Hey, and, and they won't meet the police force's needs, but they'll all be happier if we increase the standard of care of their assets. So what I shared on, on Tuesday is, you know, I think this is a beautiful building and I'd love to see it extended. The way that it's laid out is pretty awful. Police Department's area is laid out pretty awful. And there's some opportunities that if you had a full-time person that had experience could do remodels here and there and phase it in instead of just, I don't want to do a bountiful where they had got it and they had to go somewhere else and have their office space. But if you did it right, you could get someone in, help.
It was a disaster for them.
Absolute disaster. So.
Okay.
I just want to, that's, it's not just manage these contracts, but actually helping us revision the city hall and maximize its potential and take care of it so we could stay in this building. Just, despite what the residents are saying out there that we want to build a new city hall.
But does that mean we should at least budget some kind of part-time pay for somebody in, at least for the coming budget year?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I guess, I, I'm hoping these, Brad's going to come back to us and say, here's a couple of options and maybe there is some kind of interim option while we're trying to analyze what we're going to do.
I appreciate, I appreciate the support.
For the tentative budget purposes, at least, we'll have to put placeholders for some amount to do that.
We'll tap one for right now and then we can let them go do their research and then we can come back and.
I do appreciate the support and understanding and feeling the, the urgency and I appreciate all the solutions, part-time. We don't even take a part-time, even if it expanded later. Just, we need something else, an expert in here. Bruce is doing a great job, but I, I need Bruce to do the park stuff.
To me, I would like to at least see a part-time start out at that. If it's not enough, then next year we maybe realize we need more. But I, if we get a full-time and then it's like, wow, he hasn't got anything to do all this time, I, it's easier to add to than take away. Once you've got overtime, you're not going to get away with it. So I'm much better looking at a part-time.
On Bruce's list, we gotta hit the most important things first, you know, that, uh, I was here a few of those days. Uh, this mayor did this as well too, so those kind of things we gotta, we gotta take care of quickly.
Is the boiler on here? Sorry, I'm, now I can't remember.
It's our city hall.
Yeah, I'm there.
Absolutely.
But the stock market crashing, there might be some retirees, seasoned veterans out there looking for part-time gigs. So until their 401K recovers.
But we, uh.
And I do apologize that I was not here and did not get that.
I dare you. It's okay. No, this was great. I really appreciate the conversation we just had. This was helpful. Thank you. Okay, moving on. As of right now, we'll get done by eleven. Do you want to take a break there?
We did a quick thing. We did.
So, yeah, let's get some research.
All righty. Thank you, everybody. We're back. We're in Community Services, page thirty-eight. Go to Recreation, page fifty-two with Paley. And then we'll, uh, look for Mike Aggett after that with Community Development, page forty-six. So page thirty-eight.
All right, we're starting our Thursday agenda at eight o'clock. Great.
Turn your time, turn your clock back.
Thirty-eight, page thirty-eight. It's in, it's in somewhere.
Um, but we will be looking at budget page thirty-eight and fifty-two. Kind of lumped community and recreation together. So better mark those two. All right, little refresher to refresh your memory. Um, I oversee Recreation, Waterford Museum, Communications and, um. Yeah, Youth Council as well, Special Events. Yes, Special Events, yes, all in there. Um, Seasonal Employees we over, I oversee is Baseball Empires and our Summer Campaign Counselors. So yeah, you'll see those reflected in the budgets. Next slide, please. So just a few things to highlight for you to see. Um, so in the Community Services budgets, you'll see those special events. So that, you'll see our Music in the Park events happening this year. So we've kind of lumped those as a precursor to our Movies in the Park event since it is going to be new. Um, that way we can. Um, that way we can kind of build our following and build the events from that point forward. In recreation budget, page 52, you will see, um, the removal of concessions, um, thanks to city council. We approved the fundraiser for the Little League tackle football to take over. And they are very excited to open that next week with the opening of baseball season. Um, so you won't see any revenue, but no expenditures as well from concessions.
So that's a $2,000 offset on revenue?
Yes. Um, ski program, we're at where we're at because we, uh, right now, we're just doing one bus. So we can only take 55 skiers, but we are maxing out our capacity at that. Um, we haven't really had any lengthy rate lists, so I think we're right at the threshold we need to be for that program. That is in, uh, off-season recreation, which are looking at the budgets. Baseball, we have been experiencing growth in both our spring and fall seasons. So we're kind of in that growth period of like 30 to 40 participants for both of those seasons. So it's very exciting to see us, um, in that forward trend for baseball. Professional services, um, that line item, a bunch of stuff is lumped in there. So I kind of wanted to just break that down for you. Um, civic rep, that is where we do all of our online registration. That also helps support other, um, anything they want to take a registration for. So we'll do things through Woodacre Museum there, obviously, baseball. Um, we'll also do things like we've run a couple of our, um, police community classes through there. So it's been very helpful to.
Community garden goes through there.
Yeah, community garden. Um, we've done donations through there for for baseball and various things. So it's helpful to have a way to take online registration. Volunteer background checks. So that's all of our coaches essentially comes out of that. Our Quick Score Sports schedule comes out of that. Um, and our, we do all of our staffing for like summer and baseball through, uh, an app called Homebase. Um, so that's a pretty insignificant cost to us there to have something available for them. Um, that's also how we do our time card keeping. It's a system where they can log in right there onsite and out. It kind of has some geofencing, so it reminds them to clock out. Summer camps, you will see, um, Lego camp, we doubled in size. Pretty exciting to have that. And then archery grants we received, 5,500 from Rocky Mountain Power Foundation. So that more than covered our costs for the equipment that we purchased for that program. And, um, we are expanding offerings this summer with, um, intermediate class as well as adult classes for that.
Now, can you teach those in the park for the adults?
Yes. Yeah, it's just a 10 meter and 15 meter distance. Um, and our, the bows we have that we purchased, the poundages adjustable all the way from eight years old up up to adults. So same equipment.
So it looks to me like, with the exception of 15-ish thousand dollars, this is a pretty self-sustaining fund.
For community or recreation?
Sorry, community. Yeah, is, let me make sure. No, that was recreation, sorry.
Bill, those are the professional services, the 75,000 we have proposed, potential updates to the master plan with Parks and Rec. So I think there's a little bit of money tripled into that and, you know, we're pulling up 15,000, so we need to go back and. Just double check what's in that professional services because all the listings she's got, all that doesn't equal 15,000. So we'll go back and check it out and see what specifically is not listed, so.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm confused. Can you like, are you, where where which line item are we talking about?
In community services, professional services. And that's on page 38.
Oh, okay.
So there was a 75,000 proposal. We think that there was maybe just some that got pushed over that was part of that potentially, but we'll go back and double check the line item to see what.
Well, so there was 75,000 request to redo the Parks Master Plan. And I propose that we have a really good Parks Master Plan that really we haven't discussed or implemented. That I think we could spend some time updating and it wouldn't require redoing the whole thing. So I reduced that line item to 25,000.
You reduced it to 25?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
That's the, that's the 15,000 you see in community services. So I, our Parks Master Plan, if if some of you recall, we had the presentation. Two of you recall, maybe the mayor, councilor Meeke. So we had a really good Parks Master Plan done.
I'm familiar with it because I'm on the Parks.
Right, yeah.
It was presented while we've been.
It's never been adopted by the city council.
So that's what I would like to do.
Presented at 18, wasn't it?
Yeah, no, it was when I was here, so 2020 or so, there was a presentation, so I was here.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
So I thought, I thought it was very well done. In fact, it had really good priorities. We've accomplished some of those priorities. But I would prefer we first have a conversation and officially either adopt it or recognize it and then determine whether or not we want to go back out. So that's.
So, so Grant, I I, and this may not be the appropriate venue for this, but I have asked the Parks Committee to go through it. And because I don't think it needs like, I don't know that it's at a point where it does need a whole brand new. They could really go through and say, I mean, they are very good at determining what, they've got a pretty good vibe on the community. They're asking people.
Like Trails Committee just did, I mean, it's rough right now and it hasn't been reviewed by anybody, but.
Right.
They've got a really large master plan that they're hoping to get on a work session to do similar to what a Parks Plan would be to review.
And I think Parks needs to be updated, but I don't think it needs to go yet. I think it can be updated. I would rather see a start that way.
So that's why there's. So that's why there's 15,000.
But they haven't done it because they're kind of always trying to get another, like, they've had a hard time keeping their thing.
Right. So if Parks and Rec wants to bring in a consultant to help kind of look at our existing one to kind of mediate or facilitate a, you know, a discussion. I think that's what I'd like to start before we actually redo.
Do you feel like that is the Parks Committee? I mean, is that an appropriate ask or should we be trying to do that a little differently?
Either way.
So the Parks and Rec Committee were very involved with putting together the master plan with the intern that did it. And they reviewed it all after the intern completed it and made changes to 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 raise to the city council to be, uh, adopted. And I, I think their city council sent them back to look at one of, one or two items that they were gonna, gonna make a tweak to and it just never came back to city council. But, but.
But we would want to adopt it as is now because it is, it is quite outdated, but there's still a lot of really good ideas.
Well, here's what I could, I think there's an opportunity for you to. So you as a council can review, I think there's an opportunity for the council to review it in its current state, right? And then you can give direction and say, you know, we'd like to see some improvements here or there. And then at that point, you say, we need a whole rewrite or just focus on these areas. That's, and then go back to Parks and Rec to make that recommendation.
Update, adopt.
Could we do, could we do like a work group session and meet with the Parks Committee?
They would love it. Sure.
I I think that would be really helpful.
Okay, work session.
But we, but we need, we need some parks, we need some parks.
Trails has been asking for this for months, by the way, so.
So Trails is also gonna get one, uh, part of the general plan, which we've talked about. So Trails is also wanting something like that.
Because the Parks Plan would be also adopted as part of the general plan, correct?
Or at least incorporate extension.
Yeah, extend, yeah, thank you.
Okay, so that's what that is.
Fantastic.
I think in coordination with our general plan adoption, it'd be really nice to get those aligned so they can be referenced.
Yes.
And part of the entire plan. But I think those can be like even just a bold list of, hey, here's, here's what we've got and what we want to try and do over the next 20 or 30 years.
Okay, do we have any other questions on either one of those budgets? Um, the biggest.
Just a quick question. So I misspoke back on the recreation fund. The summer recreation fees are going down by two grand. Why are fees going down?
If you look at the prior history, we haven't hit 18,000.
Okay, so why, why budget 21 if we're not getting.
I reduce that. I think they're overly ambitious on their revenue projection.
That's fine.
That's helpful.
So you'll notice as well that we're, we have a trajectory to the general fund.
I appreciate it. Yeah, that's, that's why I was mentioning earlier, but then, and she said, is it recreation or, um, community services? That's what I was talking about was that one.
So the way it sits now, the general fund, it needs subsidized as the rec fund, probably about 14,000.
Yeah, so we lose the 10,000 of concession sales, but we get it back by not having the 13,300 in concession expenses.
Those projections were off the line, but yes. Again, I, I'll just stress again that I don't see there being a huge issue with general fund subsidizing recreation fund. I think, and I think that's very important that we make sure all people can be, all children can be involved and participate in these activities.
I was, I think when I was.
14,000 is not a lot.
That's a, that's a.
Actually, I, what I was meaning by that was it's, you know, for a 15% expenditure, I think you're getting a lot of bang for your buck.
Absolutely. It's, it's awesome. So.
Like, I'm okay with that.
And I love our rec fund where it is under Haley and and Bryce. I think they've done a great job with our recreation fund and subsidizing it. Absolutely, that's one of those areas.
Recreation, that's always such a.
We want to manage those expenses for sure.
Recreation, comp sports did not, recreation, figure skating did. Too soon, even too soon, months later, a year later.
That's fantastic. Um, you'll also see, as I mentioned with the youth council budget, fall festival being moved under community events. Just so we have a better idea of exactly how the first money mounted event instead of being lumped in our youth council budget. So capital equipment projects, um, something that's kind of been my goal and my mindset is getting, replacing our pitching machines. Um, they, we are doing our best to keep them running. Um, we do have parks and maintenance.
Where am I seeing that? Where should I be looking at that one? Sorry, because we're, we're now at Fund 47 at that point, right?
And Haley's gone rogue as well.
Okay.
This is not in the budget, but I would like it to be.
So this is the future outlook, future.
This is a rec request.
Yeah.
However, we have currently raised, um, over 1,400 through, through donations currently. So we're able to at least replace one machine this season.
Um, would I do it like a 50/50? Like, you raise 1,450 from the.
Do a match, do a city match?
Yeah, like, can we like encourage people to donate if they, you know, like, if you get. I know I was just being really stingy.
I just don't want you to put yourselves out there, but you did a 50/50 match for baseball, but then another organization can do it instead of a, can you do a 50/50?
Yeah.
That's a good, good guidance.
A lot of different things.
Okay.
You can do it internally, but I think you're gonna get, um, for some other things.
Okay, that's a good point.
You can do that, Gina. We just won't promote it.
I think, I think they're doing a good job of maintaining machines. Just with the growing, with the growing program, the matching machines we have aren't enough.
So quantity, it's not the age of the equipment.
It's not, it's not our main place, both.
It's a combination of both, but the, the growing programs that require the pitching machine is growing. And so having one, but we only have three machines.
We have three and we're able to keep two up with a little time.
I was gonna say, how old are our existing machines?
That's a great question.
I bought them, they're 15 or something. Oh, um, no. I mean, the brand is reliable. I mean, they're, they're built for what they are, but ideally, you'd want to have at least one per every field.
And one for, and one for the baddie pitch.
You have a couple of leagues that that's what they use for their games of pitching machines. That's something we can talk about every time.
14,500. Okay. Uh, also, I guess, future plans, we'd love to start budgeting to replace at least one more pitching mound. We've got three that have the long tongue on them, but there's still one that's short and people just absolutely hate it. So we'd love to be working towards that. So future outlook, um, batting cage turf, thank you, Bruce. We can go ahead and check that off our list. No need, got that donated. So very exciting news for our program. Um, and we need to kind of start a replacement schedule of every five years where we're getting. Old batting helmets, old catching gear out and replacing with new. Um, we have been pretty good at adding some supplementary here each year, but something a little more official, something we're budgeting and working towards. Just to keep everything up to date, current and certified, with the safety standards.
Where are we at in the five years?
Um, so we have added a few more that didn't replace everything a year ago.
Okay.
Um, we'd like to add active lifestyle pro runnings and pickleball clinics, clinic clinics, um. Tournaments with our archery program, street hockey is something that's really being pushed in the state with our professional hockey team moving in. Um, and special events, keep, keep developing that music in the park and our, our volunteer appreciation.
I hear there will be a pickleball tournament as part of 4th of July.
We hope so.
I think just something to take them to note, I mean, Haley does a really good job of keeping the rec budget pretty lean. Um, but when you have some of the programs that you have like baseball, it's one of the most expensive sports to run. And we just spent 20 dozen baseballs, you know, for a couple of grand. Um, you know, some of these equipment things, we're not even providing bats anymore because that's a cost that we just can't afford. But something we feel like is very, very important to protect the, to protect the kids. So the batting moments are our huge expense. They, uh, go off the safety concussion protocol every five years. And so it's just something that we have to, so when we put it in the budget, you're gonna see a 200% increase because, you know, we can't raise fees. We've looked at raising fees, but in order to cover that cost, to raise fees, we're, we're gonna be in a couple hundred dollar range per kid. And then we're starting to eliminate kids. So just take that into consideration when we start adding it over the next two to three years of the budget, but that is something.
What is our fee per kid right now in the mid, mid-age range?
The middle is about 60.
60-ish.
What's that? I spent 200 bucks with the two kids.
Yeah, that's the old age curve, yeah.
I was gonna say, I mean, we've had just to raise fees for rec center and just, we just recognize it's just, we're trying to keep fees as low as we can. But we offset that by charging more for comp sports as opposed to recs. We don't have that, yeah.
So it looks like we've got about $11,000 every five years. Is that what you're saying we've got to replace every five years or is it?
I would, I would think we'd, we'd like to stagger it out a little more so it's not just a.
Yeah, so every year, we're placing.
No, yeah, I agree. So what I'm saying is, is do we need to increase the budget by three, two or 3,000 a year?
Right, I was gonna say, so you're always budgeting in the replacement. You're not having a huge hit every year.
So then you just can start. Right, so it's not a hard bit. It's just every year, we just know we need two or three thousand dollars.
And if nothing else, it goes in your rec fund.
This year, I think, this next year, we'll do, if your replacement program will present to you what the, what the replacement outlook will look like over the next.
So I think what Gina's saying is let's be proactive.
Let's just be proactive and and get it going and then you can, if we put two or 3,000 dollars in the year, I, that's what you're saying though. We'll, we'll start being proactive next year.
Yeah, I mean, all this year's budget's really lean, so we can start next year if that's better.
Oh, let me just tell you, next year we lean as well.
I was gonna say, that's the problem, is every year is a lean year.
The thing I'm worried about is I don't know that it's gonna get better for a while, but I do think that, I do think that this is important to the recreation program.
It is a, our baseball program is kind of envy.
So now we're taking into consideration about the baseball program is, uh, another city to the north has decided to cancel their All-Star program. And so I think you could start to see some trickle down if you people continuing down south and since our.
They don't want them.
We want them. The question is, can we accommodate, can we afford them?
Can you afford them? Do we need to be sure we're charging, do we charge out of cities? Do you charge, yeah, do you charge out of city?
Yep, it's a $10 increase for non-residents.
Last year, I believe we increased those.
It's based on the conversation we have with council, increased it just a little bit more for non-residents.
I think it's, I think it's important to remember that if we have non-residents coming down here for baseball, we have non-residents coming in and shopping. So I think there's some benefit to. I promise we do. If I'm dropping my kid off at a baseball field in Farmington, I shop in Farmington for that hour, so I think it's, I think that's.
Did you just admit that you're spending, I'm just kidding.
No, I'm just saying like, if I can't, if I, no, I'm just saying if I gotta drop my kid off for one hour, I'm gonna find the shopping as close to that as I can.
She might go to Chick-fil-A in Farmington as opposed to Chick-fil-A in center.
Yeah.
Really, how we doing? Congratulations.
We're good, unless you guys have any other questions for me.
I know it's not on this list, but it needs to. I know it's not on this list, but it needs to-
Too many people going rogue on Brad?
Alright. I'm mad at Brad.
Yeah, please tell us.
We need to be thinking about adding another field with lights sometime in the next five years.
We did, we did talk about that.
I've been thinking about that since Grady was eight or nine, so he's eighteen. I thought you missed a budget for the RFPs next year.
Who are you? What are you doing here? You're forty-six.
Page forty-six, good luck.
Alright, so, thanks for letting me, our budget, I say our budget, when we put this together, I asked the planning and zoning technician, which is Donna and Sydney, to join me. We went through everything, and what you're seeing presented is united representation of our concerns in our company. So, with that, I noted on here, a bunch more activities, sorry I didn't do it in bold points, I didn't think about that, I was trying to be comprehensive. But what's interesting about it is all the functions that community development does. You look at it, land use permitting, subdivision site plans, zoning requests, permit, additional development, code amendment is tied to land use and zoning map changes, business licensing, co-enforcement, economic development, building permitting, long-range planning. And I have another associated duties, which is like chicken and rabbit permits, fencing standards and fencing enforcement. So, there's a lot of even extraneous, yeah, order enforcement, yes, there's another one, other duties as assigned, right? So, we do a lot in our department, the three of us, and then obviously, we incorporate other members of all the other teams, and I have that noted. It's myself, city planner, planning and zoning technician, who does business licensing, building permitting, and also research. The building official by contract, and then we get assistance from other departments and contractors and employees. So that's like our city attorney, she helps a lot with what we do, we kind of joke that she's the fourth member of our staff with everything she does to help us. Our city engineer probably a fifth member of our team, and then obviously, we, we have public works help as well as well. So we're very involved in a lot of aspects as a group, DRC meetings are very, very involved on money lines and that sort of thing. And then we get guidance and assisted feedback from the, the planning commissioner, the decisions that they make. So, and I, I guess a third group that, that I would acknowledge here would be the board of adjustments. We actually, last year, used the board of adjustments, what, three or four times, I think, Lisa, which I heard is, is abnormal, but it kind of says, I think there's a storyline there about how people are starting to want to discuss land use decisions and some of the concerns they have. So, so that is a little bit reflected in the budget. So, let's go ahead and go to the next page, we got it there, okay, great. So, the, the, really the budget for community development, there's, there's not a lot changing, absent these two items that I have highlighted behind me. So, the first one is that we're asking for a part-time city co-enforcement employee. The plan is to look at a part-time employee that could work twenty-nine hours or less per week. The requested amount as a cap is forty-five thousand, but clearly, that would be adjusted per the discretionary, I guess, direction of the city council relative to that request. One thing that Brad had talked to me about, that's been discussed with Wes and Don, is co-opting the co-enforcement employee, sharing that. And we're looking at, at doing co-enforcement for multiple reasons. At, one of them that was really interesting, as I talked to Donna about it, was a business licensing enforcement violations. There's, we are not businesses operating in the city without business licenses, and we just don't have the manpower to go hunt them down and get them to apply for their licensing. So that, that's one of the, the items that's noted. Signage violations, if you look at your parish lane district, there's a lot of late signs and things that are up and down that, that are not really in compliance, that could be enforced upon to make parish look nicer. And I think a lot of, a lot of us would agree that would be nice. Site use violations, so people who, they'll get occupancy and then they go and they change the site design. Maybe they do change the sites without approval, they have changes, and use the site or new businesses that opened up in that building and we're not aware of it. So someone lets us know, but we just don't have the manpower to really go investigate it, those sorts of things. Even changes or distractions on the land, like really bright palm trees, right? That was a thing here once in the community, so anything like that that becomes a distraction or we'd have to enforce upon, right? Those are the kind of things.
Light pollution.
Yeah, light pollution, right, that's another one, that was one of the first things you asked me to do when we started here a year ago. Those sorts of things. Parking violations that may exist in a parking lot, like some kind of a pop-up business, some, some blankets or hanging, hanging flowers, those sorts of things that, that haven't followed our policies. Even pedestrian conflicts within a commercial area, and other similar land use and operation violations. And, and I know, I talked to Brad a little bit, there is a concern noted that, well, would a co-enforcement officer be proactive in residential areas? And we've talked about it, that doesn't necessarily have to be the case. You could have a co-enforcement officer that assists with the commercial industrial issues and aspects, but still have a responsive co-enforcement in residential areas. That was the, the direction of the decision of the city council, to, to maybe make it a little easier on residential neighborhoods, that's something that we could discuss. Or if you wanted to just be proactive in all aspects, that's clearly something that could be discussed. One of the things that you brought up was larger citywide issues, odor management, right, with wholesome co, that, that's a pretty major one. I know the police have been helping us to go down and check it occasionally, but if we had a co-enforcement officer, they could be more readily able to maintain those kind of enforcements and manage those and keep that communication going on to help Lisa, myself, city council be informed and have that, that relationship with those kind of issues. Even now that we have this odor mitigation program that the UDAF, Utah Department of Agriculture and Food will be enforcing, having a point of liaison who could be educated and help with those kind of practices would be benefit.
Mike, with regard to code enforcement, would there be any offset to the salary with regard to violations?
I think so.
Are there any penalties that will offset the cost of the salary?
I think so. I had the same thought, that we could start to explore, again, working with legal, appropriate fees for, for violations and enforcement to justify the position. Like I said, there's businesses that are not paying business licenses, and, and Donna has a list of them. So if we had someone able to go through and help them to get licensed, there's, there's new revenue that annually would be coming in. Another thing, because I, I'm spending time on co-enforcement and activities that are outside of even what you see on the report, I'm not able to proactively be as involved in economic development. And that's one of the things I wanted to do really aggressively when I started, and I just have not been able to do that with all the other things we're working with.
Can I ask a question?
You sure?
I could see business licenses, some business licenses in business. I get concerned, a co-enforcement person, because the lawn is thirteen inches in yard and they drive around with not enough work to do and we lose our, uh, change our brand name, but Friendly City by, Friendly by the lake.
Yeah.
You know, that's the, that's the type of enforcement. I, I, I don't want to become a, a, an HOA, you know, that stupid rule, because you have stupid old people, excuse me.
Mayor, we know what you are, we know what you are inferring.
No, I love it, like, I'm already, like, you guys are already correcting yourselves, I love it, it's great.
That's, that's what I get concerned about.
Well, I think it's, it's a fundamental question, I think, at its core, and this may be not the place for it, because we're in budget meetings, not talking about policy. So it may be a discussion for another time, is, do we want to stay a complaint-based enforcement community, or do we want to proactively enforce? And I feel like a lot of the calls that I field as a council member are related to code enforcement. So-and-so isn't doing this, lights that odor this, weeds there, street parking, whatever else it might be.
Dog zone.
Thank you, yeah, I mean, a lot of calls that I get are a result of that. And, and when you say, hey, file a complaint, I don't know that that translates. And so it's, it's walking this balance to what Mayor's saying is, do you do more of the police department where you're doing the, the soft-touch enforcement as opposed to strict, hyper-aware enforcement?
I, I feel the same way. I, I think it would be really helpful, Mike, I know this may be kind of hard to find some data, just because we haven't had a code enforcement. But I would be curious to know, how many code violations are we seeing per month or per year?
Two, two, it's, I don't, it's two per month.
We had two this whole year. We had twenty-five last year.
So is it worth it to have?
Well, what you're not seeing is all the behind-the-scenes things that are, you know.
Yeah, so- I mean, is this because we're not collecting all of the data?
Well, we don't have to, I mean-
If there's not a form, I don't, I don't put it on the report.
So I will share that, part of this, this is kind of crazy enough, is this, this, this item is really due to the conversations I have with each one of you about some sort of code enforcement complaint that's happening, and I, and I get-
Oh, yeah, the list is, I mean, I-
I get some, and Mike gets some, and now the question, and there's frustration that we're not following up in a timely manner. But Mike, I'm pretty sure you'd want Mike prioritizing land use items.
Absolutely.
And code enforcement might kind of get placed, and that's, and that's not, that's not fair.
Well, and also, we can not develop.
I love what you're saying.
Yeah, and it goes back to the really, building maintenance person versus Bruce, like, what do we, what do we have, what is Bruce's role, job description? Parks, it's not building maintenance. And we've talked about that approach, but it's not too dissimilar in, in its context as to, do we really want to have Mike using all of his time or Sydney using a lot of her time doing code enforcement as opposed to their really, their job, their primary focus should be?
So, coming in here, admittedly, so I'm glad that we had this conversation first, but coming in here, I was like, oh, I don't know if I like a code enforcement officer, it changes our community. But that said, everything that you've just said, these are all things that are very frustrating to our residents. And so, I do think that part might be nice, and you're right, there are things that we just cannot get to. And sort of become, I mean, frankly, we're taking a lot of Brad's times too, when we're calling up and saying, gotta do something about this.
So, so I will, so-
Brad, can I, can I just interject really, because I want to be very clear. I didn't raise my question because I'm looking for a code enforcement officer to go out and justify their side, that's not why I asked the question. We're just looking at budget, and I was wondering, I, I mean, i- is there some offset? I don't know whether that's like a tiny bit or a lot, or I don't know.
I prefer just to not budget anybody, assuming that, that's not a goal.
Right, like, I, just because we're always so sensitive with budgets, I was thinking, well, if people had a concern, maybe there would be a little bit back. I think a policy, to Spencer's point, this would be an action item, once we, if we approve this, we get a policy discussion about like what we want that code enforcement officer.
I mean, there's even a co-enforcement coalition in the state where they give training and they give updates, and they, they give you research and help you to do a better job with your community. And that's where I was coming back earlier with hybridize, it doesn't have to be necessarily even proactive in the residential areas, if you're sensitive to, to your own, you know, your own neighborhoods and the residences, you want to check that. But if you look at areas in the commercial and industrial area, there's some things that aren't getting complaints on that could be addressed, and probably would even-
Would this have been something that the, you would have found, the drainage fee issue would have been?
That's something I even had thought of, but I don't know, Brad, your, your take on that.
Would this enforcement officer have been able to, would that have been part of their purview?
At least not during the building.
That's not an enforcement, necessarily.
So, I'd like this to second, because I have a real soapbox on this one. I've been around a long time.
Councilor Amigan, I've talked about this several times.
So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take the opposite, so please don't be offended. I've been on council for nine years, but I've been coming here for over twenty-five years very regularly. I've watched a lot of councils discuss this. I, we had a code enforcement officer years ago, it was a disaster. I can remember people just dreading him when he'd come on in the street, because yes, he did have to justify himself. And I think if you hire somebody, they do have to justify themselves. So, they are out looking for things, that's not what Centerville has ever wanted to be, and I'm sure I can go through minutes, that's been said, I bet I've heard it at least ten times. That's not who we are as a Centerville. We do not want somebody, if it's not bothering anybody in your neighborhood, and it's not a safety issue, we don't want somebody hounding somebody for it. And that's what's going to happen. I, it is part of their job, it's always been part of the job, and I know it takes some time away, but that's why we got a second person was so that we could do the code enforcement. It is a zoning, usually a zoning issue when it is code enforcement. I looked today, we had twenty-five last year, now like you said, there are a lot that aren't reported. We call it, and we do, we do, you know, we do call and, and things seem to be taken care of.
I mean, think of the frustration you had on the order to do this. And, and what I'm saying is, the frustration was, residents would complain to each of us, and we'd say, hey, please report it. And then they were like, um-
But then if it wasn't bothering them bad enough to report it, I, I think if your neighbor's doing something that's bad enough that it's gonna really bother you, you should report it, and that they've got to give responsibility.
I have neighbors that call me and say, I don't want to call the city, Spencer, what should I do?
Right, the code-
You, you want me to call that person?
Brad, Brad talks about that, that sometimes people, they're like, oh, I, will you fix this? I, I don't like what my neighbors do, I want the city to fix it.
That's exactly right.
Do you want somebody riding around, looking around? I feel very strongly that if we look back into history, it is not what this is, or what we want.
So let me just clarify, the intent is not, to, to, Councilor Hamon's point is that the intent, there needs to be a policy. But our intent is not to go, because you know your neighborhood better than anybody, and if you have a little, a little widowed, eighty-year-old widow woman who can't take care of her drafts, the neighbors take care of it. We're not gonna go cite her unless the neighbors are saying, I'm getting rats or mice into my home. So what I want to be careful of is once, the red tape.
So do you feel like the policy is still complaint-based?
The bureaucratic red tape. Yeah, oh, absolutely. So the only areas, and that's where we discussed the policy, is do you want parish or commercial areas to be a little bit more proactive?
Yeah.
I've been on both then, so-
That's a good reason for the Chevron, drives me crazy, makes us look like dumb.
In Yuma, in Yuma, I was responsible for a neighborhood revitalization area, which is a lower-income area. And, and I had to be proactive, and the whole point of being proactive code enforcement in that area was just to try and get people to, to step up, take care of the yards. Because it was lower values for the entire area. So I've been on the end where we've been proactive, and we've been able to fix up neighborhoods, make them look good, and create pride in the community. And I've been on the other end where it's reactive. Our intent is not to be proactive in any way, just to be reactive, just keep it track of the reactive, is gonna be a struggle, it's not. But Councilor Amigan, you and I have had conversations where you're frustrated, it's not moving fast enough on numerous complaints, because, you know, we're prioritizing land use and that. I want to make sure we're being responsive to the person who is complaining. The challenge with back in the day, and this is with any code enforcement, is that when you cite the wrong person, right? So your, your neighbor who you love, there's complaints, can you cite that person, and then we'll get behind the scenes, can you, do you really need to cite that person, they're really sweet? Let's just get rid of code enforcement. I've been on that end where I've been challenged.
Or that person is an influential member of our community, I don't want to tick them off.
So that's what code enforcement sometimes happens, is you're ticking off the wrong person.
And Syracuse just did this.
So it's really political, it's a very political position.
Syracuse just did this, they hired one, they hired a retired policeman. It was a disaster, and they just had to let it go. The community was, so we need to look into that, we need to hear from Syracuse because-
But same, same as before, can we get some data of, you know, what are other cities doing?
Well, in all fairness, I managed code enforcement for ten years in Riverdale, and it worked great.
So, Riverdale is a much different place.
It's a big city.
I, it's ninety-six hundred residents, just so breeze.
Oh, wow, that's interesting.
Riverdale is not as big as you think.
Again, we're not arguing, it's a very large commercial area.
Commercial area.
But so what we're saying is, there's, there's definitely been a need, now, council doesn't want to go this way, I appreciate and respect that, and we're not arguing we should. But just also recognize that time is going to prioritize land use issues, and this might just, we'll struggle and we'll keep up as best we can, but it might be tough.
I will say that I, I do feel like we are reactive on certain themes, instead of proactive, and so I, that resonates a little bit with me. So probably that's my point in hearing what you've had to say. I do think that I don't want, I do not want code enforcement on people, I, you know, I don't want it to be any different than it was. I don't want to have all of a sudden, he's out driving, somebody's driving a truck around, man or woman, or whoever, but driving a truck around and looking for trouble. I mean, maybe in the main areas, but-
But that's why it'd be part-time, right?
It could be as much as fifteen hours, twelve hours a week, just enough to maintain and deal with the issues that come up on it.
When we do deal with the code enforcement complaint, particularly the big ones, like we have a property owner here who has a lot of cats and a lot of debris. And Cory and I spent hours upon hours with follow-ups and trying to get, and we had neighbors getting really angry because we just aren't getting it fixed up. But also, we've got other things happening, but we spent hours upon hours. The follow-up, writing the citation's one, but the follow-up, or finding the, the deliquid property owner, or following up on this, that, it's a process. So, again, we will continue to do our best, we just recognize we are getting the complaints.
I think we should recognize, or we should find out, when was the last code enforcement officer here? When did they go, and how long were they on? And I, I, I think historically speaking, Robin made a very good point, if it didn't work out, what makes us think that it's gonna work?
And I feel like that's kind of what we're doing with the new councils, is we're all of a sudden starting to make all the same mistakes all over again. Things that I've seen years ago didn't work, we fixed it, and now it's been long and then it's all the same.
We're really good at that.
Let's learn from this.
But is it, it's not quite the same community as it possibly was, and I, I like Brian's question there when he's saying, hey, when was the last code enforcement, we have a much bigger commercial district than we used to have. So depending on how long ago that was, I mean, there may be some benefit in understanding the historical trend and when it came and went. Frankly, it is a different community than it was twenty-five years ago, so we can't really say, oh, we didn't need it then, so we for sure don't need it now, I mean, we used to have outdoor plumbing, but I kind of appreciate indoor, so I'm just saying.
Well, and that's true, but I'm just like, I've watched the councils and they've, and we did have one council member who I know really drove the planning commission, or the planners crazy, because he wanted it by, um, he was kind of black and white, he, he wanted, he wanted by, uh, what about, what's the word I'm looking for? Complaint-based, he wanted it done, but then every time one of his friends got cited.
That's too political.
Then he was mad and wanted it fixed, and they're like, look, it's gotta be one way or the other, and there was a real bash between him and the planning committee, or the planning department because of that. But do you think we got complaints over range? I just, I think it will affect the feel of the community, I, I would really like to hear from Syracuse, because I do know, I've heard two people that they've told me about Syracuse.
Councilor Minkam, wouldn't you want somebody that was on top of those complaints you've talked to me about multiple times, and Mike, and, and we're not moving fast enough for you, wouldn't you rather have someone on it and giving your reports back, and not having to prioritize other things? I mean, that's what we're talking about here, and again, it's not just you, I'm getting live pollution or other complaints from, from every one of you.
The business licensing thing has been, I dealt with that a few times, and I admittedly was quite frustrated that we weren't getting, like, like we weren't able to just stay on it.
I remember that one, for sure.
So that was, that was frustrating, because it was like, oh, we gotta figure out what they're violating, and then they didn't agree with any of that, but they were still violating everything.
So here's what we'll do, well, I do think it's great to look at the historical and what happened and what was the role, and maybe, again, not necessarily single story of maybe your perspective, but maybe looking into it deeper and what previously history, was it under Paul or under Cory?
Uh, it was under Paul.
So, I mean, we're talking twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four years ago?
I don't know, I don't think there was one under Paul, but I'm just.
Could we maybe get some feedback from Syracuse and why there's, why they didn't like it, and maybe get some feedback from maybe a community where it is working?
I mean, I was in Syracuse and we had code enforcement, it was done by the Building Inspection Department, so.
I was gonna say, what community does not have a code enforcement?
Smaller communities, I mean, like Westbound, like Westbound wants one, right, but they can't enforce one, and that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, that's right.
But again, I don't necessarily want to do that either, because I don't want to pay the benefits. So, they get their own part-time with their own.
But again, does, North Salt Lake?
Yes.
But North Salt Lake's a ton of office.
I just, but the principle is still the same. The principle, no matter how large you are, is you, these cities have a code enforcement officer for a reason. Do you have a full-time code enforcement officer based on our site? Staff's not suggesting that, they're saying a reduced code enforcement officer, like all other cities do now.
So is our feedback to staff, go get us more information, we'll hold this on the budget now, and once we get more information, we can decide what we want to do.
Right. Yeah, so I, I like, you like looking at the history and why it did or didn't work, and why would it be different this time? Because that's gonna be the comments, particularly from those who lived here a long time, why is this different? And what did we mess up before? But again, I want to be responsive to the residents who are complaining, because we are getting a lot of complaints. And we can't prioritize, especially in the middle of the general plan, we can't prioritize everything.
So we're getting a lot of complaints, but we only have how many written? Well, they, they won't file, they won't file actual complaints.
Well, that's the issue, is that, I mean, Councilor Minkam and I have been working on this for some time, trying to get a complaint filed, and she's been unwilling to file the complaint.
Didn't we just come up with a bunch of fines for various?
But, but the question is, I'm, I'm spending a lot of time answering, have conversations with you, and so is Mike, and nothing's happening.
The difference is, is the neighbor wants there to be enforcement, but isn't willing to formally file the complaint. The code enforcement officer becomes that person that says, I'm not waiting for a complaint to come in, you're out of violation.
Not necessarily.
That's then we're not complaint, then we're not known.
Not necessarily, again, we hit the city, depending on how egregious it is, I'll get, can we back up?
I'm not saying an HOA.
I don't want to get to a policy standpoint too much, but I just want to share with that argument, I don't necessarily want the city to put their name behind it, say, I'm now enforcing it, because then we become proactive, right? I need your name behind it, and say, this is a complaint from somebody, because it's not city targeting somebody. Because this is a conversation Councilor Minkam and I have had, this is where it gets really tricky in the policy, is that, but the code enforcement officer could be following up with this person a little bit more diligently, saying, I need this, I need this, and here's how you do it, I'll make it easy for you, right? As Mike tried to do, but that's what this code enforcement could be, is on top of it. Again, we've, we've offered to have informal conversations with this person, that it's not really a complaint, but again, it's a lot of staff time that we're spending on a non-complaint complaint. And that's just one example of a few of them that are happening, they're non-complaint complaints.
And in, in the case of the business license one that I was dealing with, there was some frustration from that resident, that they weren't getting a response very quickly from the city, which was, there were a lot of reasons, very good reasons why, but if you have a code enforcement officer that understands and consciously finds that information and get the, you know, get the, because she was like, I don't understand what I'm doing wrong.
All combined, building, facilities, maintenance, and code enforcement together.
I was wondering about that.
And then they'll do both?
Hello?
Save forty-five grand. Yeah, it'd be hard finding that person that can do both.
Right, I was gonna say, so is that a skill set that goes together? I mean, I like what you're saying.
It'd be really hard.
And I'd like, I'd like to be, be deeper in the more economic development and RDA management and those sorts of things, rather than dealing with a lot of this code enforcement time. That's, that's honest, like, that frees me up to actually go and find money for the city, but if I'm continually turning around in code enforcement, it takes my time away from those kinds of activities.
Okay, we'll work on it, we'll get some information, Dave.
Yeah, I think we're in agreement, what's the, so, can you?
Thank you.
All right, so the next one is, is another, um, issue that we found within our department, and that's, uh, budgeting need for building permit software, businesses licensing software, planning and zoning software, this also could do code enforcement tracking as well. So, at current time, the, the issue is that our building permit application is a paper document that you print off of your computer screen, and you hand deliver it to the city. And then Donna fills in a Word document and files it, and she's been doing that pretty much the entire time she's been with the city. So we don't even have building permitting software of any kind that she's been using. And it takes up a lot of staff time, it's an individual app, they can't apply online, which is the way things are done these days, they can't even pay their fee online. So they have to come in here to City Hall and pay upfront at City Hall, or call in to City Hall to make that building permit fee payment. It's a major issue. Further, our current, uh, planning and zoning and business licensing software is, is very poor. It's, it doesn't track things, it's not tied to property, there's no GIS integration. It, it really is, is clunky, we have to do a lot of labor for it, it's, it's just not, it's not very functional, and I think Sydney could really attest to it, she's the one that's tried to work with it while being here, and she hits it, for lack of a better way to say it. So it's an issue. And so we did, went around, and we talked to three different companies trying to, to pursue a permitting software, to see what the options were. There was one that was really expensive, GoWell, or not GoWell, um, OpenGov, we said, no. GoWell was the middle one, and then there's another one called, I have it now, it is cloud permit, it's, it's the, I guess, least expensive option. The one that our department is supportive of is the GoWell one, um, we feel like the way that they track the information, the way that they provide information, the way that they provide access to all the departments to get to the information, and the way that they link it to, um, GIS and online payments, everything, it does everything we want it to do and need it to do. It, it creates a, a property history, all the permitting to that property would show up.
So does it track bonds as well?
Well, that's a good question, I don't know, it might be able to, honestly, we might be able to hook it back into it, I hadn't thought about that. It's not something Bryce was looking at.
Is that playing with any of our other ones that we've got, that we could do a have-on with?
We, we explored that with OpenGov, and they were astronomically priced.
Small business one, paid for, seventy-five grand.
It would have been awesome, but Bryce and I were both like.
Sometimes the one-off product is.
It's too much for me. Hundred forty, and make that up.
If you, if you have this system for Donna, could she help with code enforcement?
Would that help her to be more efficient? Could you raise your hand for me?
I, I don't, I don't, do you want to say something, Sydney?
At the, eh, okay, I use this, this software is something that I will use on a daily basis, there are multiple things that, that the planning department does, and this, at least eighty percent of my time, is trying to figure out our current software, trying to get it integrated with the different departments. Anything that involves, um, business licensing, that goes through, any kind of permits for land use, any kind of permits for building, um, that, that is something that we need as a department, that is, that is a way that we get funding for the city, that is a way that I get funded, that is a way that our development gets funded, is the economic development and the business development of the city. Having land use development is a key role in growing a city in a healthy way and in a mindful way. If we do not have a good software that is easy for the developer, that is easy for all of our departments to contact, I will be wasting a majority of my time trying to create documents, so then it follows the code, trying to, um, make sure that I get in contract with everybody, so not only am I doing the planning of trying to navigate land use planning in the city, I'm trying to herd cats in all of our departments, you know what I mean? Because everybody has a role that they are trying to do, and then integrating, then the planning, and integrating the checking, and looking at site plans, and making sure that everybody does their particular checklist, because if they don't do their checklist, then that's gonna fall on us, and we're liable for that, and that can be really, really dangerous for the residents. So, in our current software that we have, it, it is lackluster, meaning that there is not a way for us to properly communicate, a lot of the, um, departments trying to get the communication done well is much less efficient than being able to comment on the actual site plan itself, which is one of the most, um, keys in this current software. I don't want to be like a, a, a main proponent of this, but this literally is this, this right here, I, this is eighty percent of my job. So I guess I have a passion for this.
When, when an application comes in to, or a permit comes in, Donna is actually.
She has, she puts it in, she's transferring it.
But what are we using to track when an application arrives and our statutory deadlines? Is that Excel, Excel?
It's a paper form, as you can actually talk about, it's a paper form, and it goes from one department to another, and we have the fourteen-day window with A T P sixty-eight, yes.
And we're just hoping, without tracking it, nobody knows where it's at, that we meet with them.
Just hoping it keeps moving in.
Whereas the software would let everybody, we'd send out to everybody, and everybody could comment within the same window and respond all at the same time.
And it's an email, it, it's multiple emails.
With the new requirements from the state.
Which notifies you that it's in your court, the.
Oh, no, 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 it's me emailing, it's not the software.
No, no, I'm saying the software, it, would, this software would notify someone when it's their turn, yeah, yeah.
So would this give you time to maybe do more code enforcement, if we went this way, would that free you up a little bit more jobs if I should be code enforcement?
So I will not do code enforcement, I am not, I'm not a, I'm not a great code enforcement officer. Is, would the software allow for code enforcement, um, prioritization? Possibly, I'm not, I'm not too sure about that, I've never been trained in code enforcement. Do, I think that, that one's the answer, Mike, so.
Is there a software out there to help with code enforcement?
I think that this software.
This would do tracking of code enforcement.
That would track it?
Yeah, this has the function to do that, yeah, it's not on here, but it can do that.
The efficiency of this, would that in any way offset and make it possible for somebody to do code enforcement? I just feel like I have to ask that question.
Well, so if she could do it, could she do some of what Mike's doing, and then Mike could do something, if she doesn't feel like she could?
I think it's, the, that's definitely going out, because code enforcement tracking right now is on forms that I fill out, and it does take time, and then obviously doing the, the spreadsheet and that sort of thing. But, but a lot of the times is going out, driving to the site, taking the pictures, tracking site, calling the person, following up with them again, um, obviously, filling complaints that come from either you or, I mean, it's, it's other things, I would definitely say that is some of the work, probably thirty percent of the work is the form. So I think, in all fairness to your question, it would, depending on how well the tracking software is, how easy is it, if it's just like click and screen and type, it might, it might speed that part of it up, but it's the other.
But she's saying that it would save her hours every week by having this. So if she could use those hours to help you do something, then would you have more time to do code enforcement?
But let's, so you said eighty percent, but that doesn't mean you'd, that that saves you eighty percent, you're just saying eighty percent of my job is this, so how does the software, how, does that, you know, is it like, oh, it'll take me maybe half the time?
We, we don't know, right? You're asking a question, we don't have a proven way to find out. A lot of these things that are being asked, we don't know, and so I, I would almost say, we're kind of going in a little bit of trial direction with both of the things we're asking for, I openly admit that, and I recognize that. And maybe that's even the discussion of later date from policy perspective, is like, you know, in code enforcement, I mean, it's a trial session, I don't know. With the, with, going back to the, the permitting software though, what we're doing right now is.
I think the permitting software is a great idea, and necessary.
Now, is there, is that something you can do via Google Sheets or things like, I mean, we use things like that at the county, I mean, we try to use three software. Well, what's, what's really, what's really good about this software is it integrates obviously the GIS, and it, it lets you bring in your plans, so like your building plans, we've got building plans, we can actually import those right into the software, and then you can actually write on the building plans and show corrections, and send them right out to the object. I don't know if you could do that on the Google forms document, I guess that's my point.
We're not gonna be able to.
No, it's, it's, you're, you're talking about a database, not a spreadsheet, you, I, you're gonna need a database, so.
You're not gonna be able to submit it.
A full one, yeah, yeah. Right, it, 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 it's really smart software that lets you keep track, and it keeps the full history of all the content, and maybe it's potentially important.
But then, let me ask you this, do we have other cities that use this software around us? I do know that at the county, we get permit information online from Clinton and, um, Kaysville, because their software integrates with our software.
Yeah, I know, I know Kaysville's software, that's what we use in Riverdale, it's not as good as this, it's okay. Sydney, it's back, add to your question, are there, are there, uh, cities in the state or region that have it? I don't know, I don't think so, I think it's a newer product in this area, but like, OpenGov does have clients in the state, and it's really.
So what, is this one that Kaysville uses, is that comparable as far as price?
It's okay, I, I didn't, I didn't explore the price on it, the cheaper option, like I told you, the cheaper option is, um, cloud permit, they do have a few, a few cities in the city.
I think it's good to integrate, I, I know at the county, we need to have permits from the city to understand what's going on in the cities. And sometimes there is a disconnect of what's going on, where are the permits? And if you're, like, so there is a, an issue there, and so if we have, uh, software that can work together and integrate, then that's the way I think we should start focusing on that.
We, we did, we did, we did try, well, what I'm saying is, this software does integrate your building permitting, your business licensing, your planning and zoning, your, your code enforcement, it keeps the history, it tracks the properties.
With other, with other local governments.
Can it connect, can it send a notification to the county, is what you're asking?
I don't know.
Yes, can we, and so that's what I would like, is maybe we should say, Kaysville is, that's, Kaysville and Clinton are currently, uh, sharing that information, Syracuse, I, I think.
I bet you it wouldn't be hard to, to share that information.
Can the county share with us if we did that too, because we would love that information the county has, it's never shared with us. From the sense of, I mean.
That's above my pay. For the sake of time, I don't have too much more time, but I will point out, there is a logistical challenge we do have with the software. There's an implementation need, because it takes about four to five months to get the full implementation done, and I've got business licensing renewals that start up in November one. And so, our planning and zoning technicians are a little stressed about that, as you can imagine, because the timelines are a little tight. So there is a thought, we do, the one-time fee for implementation is twelve thousand dollars, we are thinking we'll have, um, extra money in the community development budget, in the building permitting, or excuse me, building inspection fees, that we could fund that implementation expense with this year's budget, if there was support to do that, but we would have to enter into a contract to do so. So that is something that, that I at least would put out there for, for contemplation, um, and, and some direction. And then the plan is that each year thereafter for three, a three-year contract would be twenty-five thousand dollars. So, um, if we don't want to go that route, we could talk about, again, at a later date, I can talk about cloud permit, you do a presentation on that. I think Sydney agrees, it's not as good of a product, but it's better than what we're doing with now, we'd probably make it work.
So, from a fee schedule standpoint, if we're spending money on a service. Fee schedule standpoint, if we're spending money on a service directly tied to permits.
Yep.
Whether it's a development permit, building permit or otherwise, are we allowed to re essentially have it be a zero sum game?
I have it on my my bullet points, those are the items to bring up, that that uh I talked with Lisa and Sydney about reviewing all of our plannings on the application fees, they're already needing some work. And so we'd have to do a study to evaluate whether or not it'd be justifiable, but yeah, we don't want the city to subsidize. Developer expenses and application and obviously to your point, at the same thought, that could then maybe pay for the software expenses, yeah, I have the same thought.
I like that too.
Yeah.
Okay, you said it it says a one time fee of twelve thousand for implementation and twenty five thousand for each year, so it costs more to maintain it?
Each year.
That's what's kinda like, that's calling my mind.
I'm trying to figure out.
Implementation is just, it's setting up all the forms and setting up all the pathways, linking in G I S, making sure all.
So is is that why it's thirty eight thousand this year is because you're paying maintenance and the setup, I I I understand that now.
We are saving, and our saving for not using the other software is what?
Uh fifty eight hundred dollars.
Okay, so the first year is really close.
There's an offset, there's an offset as well.
Our existing software.
So we use a janky existing software.
Not good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not good.
Yeah, we're having to input by hand.
And Donna's doing everything by hand and it's not good from my perspective.
So if I, if I submitted an app, if I tried to submit an application to the city and they told me, oh, you gotta come in and. Hand deliver a check and you can't submit your plans online.
But we gotta deliver the check up here and you gotta submit it to them like.
Right, I mean, yeah, that's true, yeah.
I would just check with Mike and see if we have an open API to council member.
Open API, I bet you they do, I'm meeting with the consultant tomorrow, cause he wants to know where things are going from this meeting, open API.
Yeah, cause then we can talk back and forth between software.
New growth is how we get that above and beyond the the truth and taxation and that is permits, we have to know. At the county, where what's going on in the cities and if we're not, if there's that disconnect. And it makes it easier if we have a software that is similar to what we have at the county.
And state legislatures only gonna continue to make it more challenging for us and give us stricter deadlines and timelines and and accountability. And one of the issues when the the league will routinely ask and say, how many permits are you issuing and how us compiling the data will take time. To to fight the developers and what they're asking for, but if you have the software, you can create those remarks and say, here's what's happening in our city and here's what our challenges are.
What what do they do?
We are meeting their fourteen days by three, you know, by six days, that's what they look for.
What is the service that we're getting for handling for twenty five grand?
What do you mean?
The maintenance contract, what do you, what do you get for?
This software, the it's cloud based, right?
It, yeah.
So you're paying for, you're paying for all the storage and everything.
There is one more feature I I didn't get into, I'll just softly hit on it, there is a question and answer box, so if an applicant's on there and they're confused and they're needing help. We immediately have a service representative that's available during work hours eight to five, they'll answer any questions on the chat box or or even take a call to answer questions. So if an applicant's filling it out and they're they're having a hard time understanding what to do, there's someone ready to be available, this is my service telephone, which I thought was a very cool feature. But we're willing to do whatever you you see fit, we'll take even the cheaper software, we just think this is the better fit for the city.
Where's that fifty eight hundred bucks, where does that come off the budget?
It's just being replaced, so it's in that uh in in uh I T um.
But it was to, but it was to Gina's point, it's the twelve plus the twenty five would be about thirty eight.
So they requested, they requested twenty five.
It would be thirty eight, that's that amount.
But but then they actually put it in as thirty eight thousand eight hundred, not because it's covering both the things.
So the the. And the one thousand eight hundred that's remainder is to cover our G I S access and some kind of minor I T cost, right, like.
Right, but that's, I thought you were saying though our existing contract would go off, which was about fifty eight hundred dollars.
It is, fifty four hundred, so yeah, I meant the budget F Y twenty twenty five, that's.
So they're showing up with.
I see that, but that should be minus out from the thirty eight eight hundred, shouldn't it?
No, no, because this is a whole new budget, we're not adding it to twenty twenty five, we're adding it to twenty twenty six.
We'll discontinue the the, we'll discontinue that current contract and then.
It's it's nine o'clock, so.
Yeah, I'm happy to be finishing my math, we can finish too.
Thank you.
Think you have to talk about planning commissioners?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
And building inspection?
Planning commission budget.
If you want to.
I'll just quickly note on planning commission budget, we reduced um the recorder services, obviously, as was discussed with the city council during the administration budget. And then um there's a an over, I guess an over expenditure requirement that's her last year, I read the numbers. Member attendance should not be sixty five hundred, so we reduced that to fifty five hundred. Um and then we raised board of adjustments because like I said, we have had already three meetings last year and one already this year, so we're anticipating up to four this year. And worst case scenario, having that that money cover them um and.
Council member Plummer and I have spoken about the landmarks commission, about potentially having another just kind of discussion to. Uh I thought it'd be, at least we thought it would be good to have a conversation to reevaluate what their role could be and what we envision, I think. Councilor Plummer's experience could help us look at that, so pretty much anyway, it might be good to have another quick quick work session to say what would, if we did keep going with this, what would be their purpose, so.
And again, if you want to.
You offer, I take that.
I just, I I heard that it sounds like that too was involved previously, so.
It was, yeah.
And then um just going to to building and zoning inspection, uh we did change, you can only use I T service and licenses probably because the city has a more expensive license cost.
Just one quick note, just so businesses ask you, the great thing about what Corey did for so many years. It's kind of fought sunrise increasing their fees, because there's a couple of ways that cities do this and that is usually like a sixty five thirty five percent. And sunrise is wanting to increase their fee, even though their fees are down here per hour, you can legally charge up here and then you pass it on. Uh and planning for, so building inspection sixty five percent, the 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 red lines, those guys.
Yeah, the marker.
The reviews?
Building inspect, yeah.
Yeah, the plan review, there it is.
Plan review.
Thirty five percent, so Corey has done a great job kind of fighting sunrise and increasing our fees, so we really. Cause some cities will make a little bit of money off building inspection and keep that within the the city. Uh our fees are still low, so when businesses say that, our, we've kept our fees just at the hourly rate. And we are not charging what we could or should be charging for building inspections, just a side note, I think it's awesome, I like that we keep it low to businesses.
I think we should only be charging what we're charged.
That's how we, that's how we fought it for so long and so when Mike says he has some money, it's not this, some cities will think tens of thousands, not hundreds of thousands, I'm river, what'd you guys have? So again, we keep it low, um which I think is great, yeah.
Well, I appreciate you hearing me out, at least letting me bring these forward, um things that I've seen in the near year, I know I've only been here a year, but I appreciate you. Hearing me out and hearing what I feel like it's, so thanks for your time and yeah, reach out to any questions.
You got more than a bargain for it, didn't you?
A little bit, that was definitely not fifteen minutes.
Alrighty, we're going on, we are heading uh non department transfers, whatever else?
Page fifty.
So is it all left to Nate and you now or do we have?
No, you'll still get water in here, you'll still get drainage enterprise funds.
Alright. Nate, you're the, you're you're the finance guy that put this together, so you could boom, through these.
That's right, so on the. On page fifty, uh as the budget currently sits, we have three hundred and thirty five thousand being transferred to the capital projects fund.
This is from the general.
From the general fund. And keep in mind, so last year we transferred a hundred thousand to the budget, so councilor Revers, when you bring up you're worried about the transfers in, that truly is the one time expenses. We are actually doing better in theory, cause we're transferring three hundred and thirty five out of this budget into.
Into the general.
Into the capital projects.
Oh, okay.
So last year we transferred a hundred, so again.
That's good.
Yeah, so really what we have is a lot of one time expenses and that's truly what fund forty seven is meant for, so.
So this is money going in.
Out of the general fund to the capital project.
I'm not an accountant, this is going out of the general fund.
To fund forty seven, essentially, to fund those projects and sun forty seven.
So is all of this nine hundred and forty four going into?
No, what we're just talking about, he'll go through each one, the three thirty five is.
I got it, this is being transferred out of the general fund into capital projects.
Which last year, our current fiscal year, one hundred thousand will be transferred.
You're right, okay, I'm I'm back on it, I'm sorry.
Okay.
It's getting late.
Um fourteen thousand is going to the recreation fund, which we talked about.
Yeah.
The one hundred and eighty thousand uh for the R D A, that is the uh sales tax estimate for the young power sports incentive. And then the four hundred and fifteen thousand, this was the amount that was the, we went to the truth and taxation in twenty seventeen. For this purpose and so this amount has stayed the same since twenty seventeen, it doesn't have to, but uh.
And if we do a transportation utility fee, I would ultimately like to see that four fifteen kind of go back to the general fund.
Right, exactly, it should be, it should be a zero sum game, so the the residents, when they get their total bill, isn't, it's not different, it's the same, yeah.
If we go that route to transportation.
So so if 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 you're, if you're creating a transportation utility fund.
Yeah, uh like a, like an, sort of like an enterprise fund?
Yes, you're you're charging it there and that that means you don't need to charge more.
You're not pulling as much from the general.
General fund, exactly, so that that ask goes down.
Right, right.
Yeah, if we go that route, which will have that work session.
Which again, I like that concept, I like these concepts of we've kind of siloing it in projects because it's easier, I think, for the public to identify. This is how each one of these departments work and really require the funding associated for those projects.
They're not gonna like that extra fee.
It's not an extra fee, cause they're.
They're gonna get, they're gonna get it one way or another, like frankly, it there, it we're, and most of our, I mean, our chance, our general fund is funding streets. Which comes from property tax, sales tax.
We create a transportation utility fee against every item, it's potentially four dollars a house and.
But it is a separate item, but it's, we have to get the money for the roads one way or another.
Whether it's property taxes or that.
That's correct.
There is, but we don't like raising them, if we, you know, I mean, I, to me, it's like, hey, we're kind of dividing out that cost for the roads. A little, trying to make it a little more equitable to those who are really utilizing the roads.
What's personnel adjustments, did you talk about that?
The personnel adjustments, that is our contingency amount for if we have someone retire, I just wanna make sure you're aware of it. Or pay adjustments that come up throughout the year.
Is this also covered if they decide to come on or off insurance?
It could, okay, okay, so it's kind of like a contingency.
Speaking of that retirement, this, it may, it's making me think of something sort of off topic, but I do wanna bring it up. Could we see, you guys went in and kind of um maximized or economized, I don't know what the word is, but. You kind of said, hey, okay, we're not really using this much for medical insurance because some people don't need it. So before I pick on one individual again on that, like I did the other night, could you just show us how much you've reduced? You need to see that total on the medical insurance, because I noticed in one of them, it was a significant drop, I'm thinking there might be one person who's not using insurance, but if that person were to quit. And leave, you might have an, like, that's a significant amount of money.
Well, and what, and that will budget for, again, that might be a little different, but it's gonna be so one off that I think we'd be okay.
But if this person quit on July second, we'd have to be doing, I like, the problem, the problem I'm worried about is you, if you have. Hundred thousand dollars worth of reduced insurance and suddenly everybody really does need insurance, we, I wanna know what that total amount is.
We left still some buffer in there to account for that potential situation, again, we're not, we haven't seen one in Nestle, we we just saw one for our first time since I've been here, since in five years.
They have left some money in there for them, taken all of it out, just.
Yeah, we still left us a buffer.
Let's see the, can we, but can we see the amount saved button versus the the amount that was more than ten dollars, less than a million? That's a good range.
That's a good range, yeah.
Sure, cover my, but yeah, for sure, we'll get that for you.
Just so I don't, like, I, like, it doesn't need to be about, like, individual departments, I'd rather just see the whole number, just so it's kind of like, oh, okay, yeah. Or maybe you just tell us, hey, we think it's, did you tell us, maybe you told?
Well, it's eight, eight times twenty five, so two hundred thousand.
Okay, well, that's fine.
Thirty, better than that?
So out of the two hundred thousand, how much did you keep as a buffer?
Well.
Yeah, that's a good one.
There's not, there's not really a buffer, not much of a buffer.
See, my concern, my concern is what if those eight people suddenly do need health insurance, I mean, I know they probably won't, but there is a possibility.
But that's what this person does.
They're entitled to it if they need it.
There are a couple employees who I know will have life changing events in this next year. Who is more than likely going to affect their insurance costs, so.
Or their change in their election.
So I, if I knew about it, if I knew it was changing, then I reflected it here.
You kept it in.
There's obviously a number of employees, I think you said eight, that don't take our insurance, if they choose to take it through open enrollment, I honestly don't know that right now. Um so I'll have to adjust that later, um but if I knew there was a change going, then I.
You accounted for it, makes that some good heart to hearts, so.
I think it's seven, actually, if we did have that one. And it's fair ask, right, and that's why we haven't done it in the past, because we wanna create that buffer, but what we don't also like, and the mayor and I've talked about this, is that. At the end of the fiscal year, we do essentially have three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so we transfer to fund forty seven. And so there's this, or even more than that sometimes, where you're transferring some from the general fund to fund forty seven and we're talking about property tax increases or fee increases and. And and here we are moving stuff into our our fund forty seven when really maybe we didn't have to and we need to account for that better, so it's really. Putting ourselves as staff in a situation to be really mindful of our budget and what we have. But I'd rather be, I don't want to increase property taxes or any other increases in fees if we could be better at budgeting what we have and being more transparent, so. There are sometimes, as budget officers to some regard, and maybe we create our own little buffers for us, cause we anticipate there'll be some craziness, right, that happens. And so there's some things generally built in, but we wanna tighten it down just a little bit more.
Where are we at with the twenty five to thirty five percent that the state allows us to hold extra for the general, thirty percent?
We're at thirty percent, so the, but everything in fund forty seven is above that thirty percent. So we have three million dollars as our rainy day fund and then we have fund forty seven, that's for our one time expenses on top of that.
And if you remember, we typically, what we do is, that's one of our kind of catch all budget amendment items is, if we, once we hit that thirty percent, it's an automatic.
And that's what I'm saying, we're talking about transferring money back, it's getting it out of that thirty percent into fund forty seven, that's.
Yeah. How much, how much is in fund forty seven, I know I know one, but, oh, never mind, I.
Seven million if I, if we're going quickly.
And what is the, what is our thirty percent, what what amount is that?
It'll be three percent of the revenue.
Two million, yeah.
Of our, you have three and a half million.
Of the general fund budget, right?
Okay, alright, I'm trying to see, so this, this fund forty seven budget that we're seeing does not have the seven million?
No, it doesn't. It's in your budget, you get monthly, the monthly financials, you could see it on that first thing.
Next time I do the uh.
Yeah, you'll be on your.
Financial statement.
I was gonna say, I just grabbed the financial statement.
But you see what we're trying to do, so also we're trying to just be more mindful, so we're not putting seven eight hundred thousand dollars in fund forty seven and we just increase property taxes.
That's, I, yeah, I just wanna make sure.
So when we really need a property tax increase. That's why I like the transportation fund too, it's, it's really recognizing revenues and expenses where they should be.
I, that's, that's how I feel, I hear what you're saying, Graham, but I do like that as well, because it really does help us to see. And especially with these infrastructure things, like we, residents rely on those things, those are really important, we don't really have a choice on them. And we really shouldn't be shorting transportation needs ever.
Or we shouldn't, to what Fran's saying, what Mayor's saying is, you shouldn't be using a medical insurance. Hedge to fund capital projects, essentially is what was happening.
Oh, okay, uh you guys, you you smart people, you're right.
And perpetual care, fifty five.
Perpetual care. Um so on this, uh see the eighty percent, we, so whatever we collect, we transfer. Uh eighty percent to the general fund to cover, help cover uh the parks, the amount that they spend on the maintenance. Um that does not cover all the amount that they truly spend at the cemetery, but that's the formula to do.
As a reminder, I believe to maintain is in the ninety to a hundred thousand dollar range to maintain cemeteries, is that still old true, Bruce, about that? So we transferred thirty thousand, so general fund is subsidizing it by that much to maintain our cemetery.
They're they're contributing thirty thousand?
The perpetual care fund will.
There, there's something that I get at. There, there's something that I get, I find I got that.
Yeah, we never truly know how much we're gonna get. In past years, we've had about twenty-eight thousand. So whatever the actual number is that we get, we transfer eighty percent of it to the general.
So the fund hopefully grows twenty percent each year. But the general fund is subsidizing the rest.
Which is kind of a funny notion, right? You're like, one's fund, you're transferring one amount back to the general fund that's already subsidizing, it seems like. We could retool that.
That's how perpetual care funds are set up, though.
Really? That's a weird way.
Generally, a perpetual care fund is, is healthier than our current one, and you're just using the interest or, yeah. In an ideal world.
It's more like an endowment is what it should be.
And ours.
Yeah, which we have the initial endowment, the thirty-seven thousand we can't touch.
I mean, we could do that. I mean, we could just make a one-time dedicated transfer from the general fund. To the perpetual care fund, and then you would never have to do that back and forth. You just rely on the interest income to do that.
Which meant one day we may have that conversation, you just tend to tend to more leisure.
That way you just wouldn't have all.
We, we talked about it, because that was a memo written way back in the day when it was created. The intent was to have a million dollars in that account. And you just use the interest on that to support the cemetery. And that was the plan until things changed a little bit, until there was funny accounting happening. Is that fair?
And the guess is it's about ninety grand a year to maintain. Our department, uh, leave its budgets just a little over a million. That's about nine, ten percent of our, our equipment expenses.
So about ninety grand a year.
Which means you have to have about a million two in your account if you had a seven percent interest rate, income interest rate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, moving on. Uh, we skipped rap tax, which is on page fifty-four.
That's a big one.
In rap tax, I have followed the same procedure that we have in prior years, where eighty-five percent. Plus the entriscus transfer to the parks, five percent goes to the Whittaker, and five percent to the theater. With the remaining five percent sticking in the fund for, to be decided on with future use. Uh, the big thing about rap tax is our current, uh, our current rap tax expires in April of next year. Which means if we would like to put it on the ballot, it needs to go on the ballot this fall, we would like to continue rap tax. I definitely recommend we do because it's a significant source of, of funds for our parks. That's what's built, everything going on at Community Park this year and much more.
I love it because I can say to people, because people complain to me that they don't want this in the park, or why are you building pickleball courts? And of course, the pickleball courts are necessarily funded for them, but it's easy to say, you as residents told us you want better parks or better. And so that's where you agreed to give us this money, and that's where we have to spend it.
Painless, painless tax.
You gotta, you gotta put it on the ballot.
Yeah, so I've asked, I spoke with Bryson Haley.
They were charged with that, I mean, that's not before lawyers.
Counted in the election. Amount of money that was on the, last night. So there was.
I don't think there's gonna be any extra.
I don't think there's a cost. So I've asked, I met with Bryson Haley to start creating, and we'll have a work session. There are different things we can do. They ever keep it the same, but it would be good to have a conversation with you all to see, because you could include programming or other opportunities.
Discretionary line items, couldn't you?
So we need to have a work session just to make sure we get on the same page of what we're putting out there. If we want to keep it the same, we can do that too. That's what people knock stuff.
Because battlefield trees serve rap, kind of like, like grants.
They allow pro, and they allow programming to be funded, not just equipment.
Correct.
So you have fun programming.
Actually, what works this year, I don't know.
Yeah.
I love it. Oh, no, Castle Rayman moved on already. Castle Rayman has already moved on.
But can I just quickly ask, have we paid off the Island View?
No, oh, no. This will be the last year.
Is this, is the cost of the four eighty-seven, or is it, I mean, we, we built the pickleball courts. What, what's the four eighty-seven covering this year?
It's covering our bond payment designs, our real property lease for the Island View Park.
Okay.
So this will be our last year.
Yeah.
Yeah, the payment for the Island View is four hundred and one thousand.
But when is that? When is the last payment?
This is the last.
I know, so when is the date, what month?
June of twenty-sixth.
Okay.
What's next? Rap, like Waterfond, Waterfond, Waterfond. These guys are in Ticker Air.
They've been waiting super long.
This is where it gets exciting.
Look at how determined they are.
If you're not careful, you're talking about brown water.
Bring it up already.
That sure helped you guys. It's gone bad.
Thank you. So yeah, thank you all. We're happy to be here. If you don't know, this is Stephen Hunt. He's our water supervisor. I want to make sure you see him and recognize him because he's gonna get talked about here in just a second. I just, a couple of our water department highlights. We kind of just have, let's see. There we are. I got a couple little add-ons on top of that. They're really brief. A couple of the highlights that the water department completed this year was the LCR, the first round, which that led in copper rule. Um, I kind of touched on that with, talking about the GIS and the implementation of GIS to this. But this was an extremely daunting task for them as they went through and had to vacuum out every single service line that we didn't already have concrete information for. To verify the materials, so we can put it into a long-term database and start to make a plan as to. Getting all of the remaining service lines that might even be questionable with lead. They'll have to be replaced over the next seven?
By twenty thirty-four.
So that's gonna be something that they're gonna push down to the communities to enforce. Might come with cost or an offset, but that's gonna be a couple of years down the road. But that's been an amazing thing. Steve's gonna talk for just a moment about the backflow program that we just implemented last year. It was a software upgrade for us, and the success there went there.
So this was some, the program we used to have is no longer supported. They weren't even answering our phone calls anymore. So we decided to switch this, and it really wasn't that much money. But what it's done is, I've been able to go do inspections of, well, I'm still working on it, every business in the city. And in fact, it's been really good because we're getting people caught up in where they should be for the safety of our drinking water, but I've actually had a couple I caught that were. To the point where if I would have gone into our water, it would have been really bad. They'd have been drinking like water with fertilizer and stuff in it. So. Um, it's a good program. We're still working through it. My goal is to be done by the end of this year with going visiting every city, or not every city, every business in the city, so. It's worked out really well. It's just, most people are really nice about letting me in, but not everybody is. So, um, but yeah, we're working through that. I'm trying to train our guys to learn how to do it as well, so I don't have to do all of it, but that's kind of where we're at, and I think we'll be done by the end of the year.
And that software program has made it amazing. Lauren has also been able to be a huge asset to us with that software to help alleviate some of the challenges that Steve's also facing in that program. Uh, another success that we don't show up there is, over the past year, maybe a little bit more, uh, we did have two of our operators pass the water distribution exam, which is an extremely challenging exam. Has a, uh, above fifty percent fail rate on first-time takers, so we were really excited to have, uh, both Jace, Witherby, and Derek Woodbury both have success on that. So that was amazing. Um, and then the last thing was actually what we have up here, and I just wanted to show these guys as their own highlight. This is. Uh, an amazing group led by Steve. Um, he's really got the buy-in that we need from these guys. I wanted to show the lack of experience, but that's actually a, a huge credit because. We've already seen a tremendous reduction in repair, uh, the cost and time that we take on repairs. Um, we've got guys already doing fire hydrant repairs without any guidance at this point. They've even offered support to other communities and help with their training programs because. And I say that because fire hydrants isn't something you fix every day. So some people may not see one for ten years. So when that opportunity presents. Not only were we able to support them, but they're also to get, able to get trained, all groups at the same time, and we feel like that was a wonderful asset. But I just wanted to highlight them, that our longest-tenured one after Steve is six years. You'll see that's our less-than-part-time meter reader. Then we go to Jace Witherby at four years, Derek Woodbury two, Daniel Carston, and Ronnie, who's the electrician. All with just around a year, and all of those, when they came to us, had next-to-no experience in this industry. So that's where I really wanted this to be a highlight and a credit to Steve and his training and his immense amount of patience. That goes into, uh, being able to accomplish what they're doing. So a big hats off to him, so. Um, as we move forward to the budget highlights, uh, so we do see the increase, um, to do an impact study, or impact fee studies, excuse me, in line three-ten. Eight thousand dollars increased there. We saw the significant increase in the Lieber Basin water purchase that was previously mentioned the other night. That was a fourteen point six percent increase. Uh, that took us to a hundred and seventy, just over, just shy of a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. Uh, that we pay for about the equivalent of three months' worth of water for our entire city. Over the next couple of years, we're gonna see that continue to grow. Their estimated amount for fiscal twenty-eight is gonna be just north of two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars for that same amount. In that year, that will represent an eighty-six percent increase over six years. So it shows how valuable water resources are. We know that, and, but, I mean, that is a, a huge amount that we're growing up. We're seeing fourteen to sixteen percent increases annually on that, and so that's.
What will the amount be next year?
So next year is at one hundred and ninety-five, four seventy, which is a fourteen point three percent increase. The following year, two twenty-six, five sixty-five, which is a, just shy of a sixteen percent increase over that one year. So. That's, uh, one of the other things that we face is we don't want to lose that resource, whether it be for emergency. Plus it does allow us to not utilize all of our, over-pump our wells or over-use our resource, and we can be a little bit greedy and make sure that we're ready to supply the residents here. Let's see, the other things I wanted to touch on, fluoridation, line four ninety-two. I know the fluoride's leaving, but we are asking that number to stay because there's gonna be very high disposal costs. And we've got infrastructure that's gonna me, need to be addressed, whether it's damage that's been caused to electrical panels, doors, buildings. And then just, like I said, the disposal, disposal of the equipment, all these things are gonna come at quite a cost, so we want to, uh, be able to leave that number where it sits.
So Dana, I have a question, just so that everybody has some of the information I have. So there's a lot of equipment pumps and different things that they put the fluoride in with. And it's my understanding we're going to keep that equipment and not get rid of it, so if another chemical does come along, which they seem to think it may down the road. We will already have that equipment and not have to start over, is that?
Yeah, so that'll be a big shutdown process that has to, so we have to cease any injection on May seventh. That will probably wing down just a little bit prior to that. That follows what Lieber Basin's kind of doing. Decreasing that amount a little bit, which will help us to start to flush some of the lines of the injection system. And we'll start reverse pumping things back into our bulk tanks and that. There's gonna be a lot of man-hours that goes into this as we run water through them and storm correctly. But yes, pumps and that, if they're in good repair, we'll find a way to store them appropriately if they are gonna be able to use.
This is scheduled for the first meeting in May's work session for Mike to talk about, kind of the plans.
And for a while, we want to kind of keep the lid on it, tell the, briefly on exactly how we're gonna go about it. So it's good for you to know that we're talking about it, but yeah, we've, we've got a plan that we're gonna implement or come to City Council on, and figure out. There's several different things that are gonna transpire with this as well, so.
With the, with the corrosion on the equipment, is thirty-five thousand enough, or are you just saying we start there and see?
So we're leaving it just to that number. Um, like I said, the disposal cost, we've already seen what some communities have looked into. There are. Um, state contracts that will assist with this, but it is a hazardous chemical. So we're seeing people that have dealt with similar quantities. Have cost them upwards of twelve to fifteen thousand dollars just to get rid of. So we wanted to leave this number as a placeholder. And start to work on it over the year as we start to look at some of those upgrades and changes.
Eagle environmental to help us.
Uh, yeah, there's a couple, yep. Clean, Clean Harbors is another one that's, that a lot of people are familiar with.
Kind of one, but not jump real fast on this. Let's let everybody else figure out the best way to get rid of it. We'll come along with it, but it was six hundred gallons costing twelve thousand dollars to get rid of.
We have seven hundred gallons.
You have seven hundred right now.
Crazy, yeah.
And based on looking at, like I say, they have some of the state contracts and that, so I loosely looked at them. We'd probably in that, be in that fifteen to eighteen thousand dollar vicinity all the time they dispose it. All the paperwork and that. So this will be a years-long process, really, but we will, we'll immediately stop on the seven.
One thing to take note to, we did start hearing this, so we made sure we didn't order anymore. So Steve did a good job of making sure. That we're using the right wells to try to use it down, so we didn't have to, you know, one well was almost empty. And then have to bring it in to fill up one well where you top it all off. So we had rumor a little bit about that it was possible coming. I didn't think it was gonna happen to be totally honest. So we, I don't think it's been over about a year since we took it delivery, if I remember right.
Yeah, it's been about a year.
So it's not like we spied up recently and we're gonna pay to get rid of a lot of, we've had it for a while.
Will nobody else use it and ship it to another state or somebody that wants it?
So there are challenges with that because they'd have to do the sampling, and you have the, uh, what is the certificate of analysis that has to be done? So if somebody were to find a means, they'd probably find it just as cheap going through a different chemical company that's already doing it. So we're likely just, it'll be disposal.
You know, it'll be just a slow process. We'll take the thirty-five thousand, Steve will plug it into his workflow. So we'll go over maybe four to five years in getting rid of it, but we'll maintain thirty-five thousand. Start replacing doors, we found some wiring we gotta get replaced, it's been corroded. So it's not something we have to jump on. We can say, okay, during the winter. We're gonna focus on dismantling the thirty-five thousand dollar worth of stuff.
I'm assuming you're probably gonna try and eliminate the seven hundred gallons first, just because of the danger of the chemicals.
Yeah, most of, most of the damage that we have in the pump houses is due to just the evaporation and stuff. So yeah, disposal will be on the forefront of our whole.
We'll, we'll talk about it at first meeting in May.
Brad didn't want me to say this, nobody said that to me, but anyway.
It's always my favorite when he says that.
But anyway, yeah, we, we think we'll, we'll probably have enough money in the fluoride budget this year to get rid of it. So we'll start with repairs in the.
Loose lips sink ships there, Mike. So you want to keep a lid on it, but that lid is like.
It's like flying over.
Brad didn't want me to say this, Lisa didn't want me to say that. All right, so if we look at, uh, line five-ten.
So line five-ten is our maintenance and repairs. We did ask for a ten, a ten thousand dollar increase. That's about a six percent increase. Which is somewhat in line with, uh, the fee increase that we were looking at. Uh, we think we'll able, be able to continue with, uh, the work we're doing. And that does allow me to bring a highlight that I didn't mention. We are trying, uh, similar to like we talked about with the crack seal. This year, um, we're going to do one of the smaller waterline replacement projects in-house with our own crew. Not only for the cost savings, but for the training opportunity, because with these younger guys, I came from a background of excavation when I came here. And I felt like that was really valuable to be able to not just watch some other people do it all the time, but to physically touch the pipe, put it in the ground, do the holes, you know. All the, the whole thing start to finish. We feel like that's gonna be invaluable. So I just wanted to touch on that. That, that'll come out of that five-ten, so we're only, um, materials on a project like that, which is saving us pretty good chunk of money. Lastly, on this one is the six-twenty-one, the water testing. I know that last year we said, oh, it's a one-time fee and we'll drop it all back down, but. So the UCMR five, we are actively in that process. It was a five-month, or a five-quarter sequence that took place. so the UCMR five's, we are actively in that process. It was a five month or a five quarter sequence that took place. We did have one of our wells out of non-functioning for a little bit. The city hall well's been out for a little bit. So that's going to continue some of that sampling requirements. We still do all five quarters at each well site. And they also have a new really fun thing called the PFOS, which is the forever chemicals. And we're anticipating some sampling costs that are going to go along with that. I don't know what those numbers look like, so I just asked that it be held at the number that we had. We feel like that'll cover it. We're hoping that we should be under that amount. But with the unknowns with the PFOS one right now, we don't even know, they don't even know what they might be expecting.
They're actually testing it at my house and they're trying to see how much groundwater they can get to one house instead of building.
So one thing-
And we succeed.
About UCMR five, that's unregulated. They did sample. They, there's a witch hunt. Find chemicals for them to make us test or whatever could be harmful. So, you know, we may go through this. I think we won't have any problem with it. But one point in time, you're going to, there's going to be something that comes up because every five years we use smart six R's on the roll. So testing is what's the fun part about that. So anyway, sorry, Dana.
Nate, when does the bond roll off?
Twenty thirty one, I believe. Give me a second to verify.
While he's looking at it, it's going to be a reminder there is a built-in five percent increase as Mike had stated on Tuesday. It was zero increase last-
What's the interest rate on the bond?
I'll look for that as well.
That's low.
It's pretty low. Around a two percent. So if I may, then we'll just go forward with the capital equipment and the projects. First line item you see there is the telemetry upgrades to some of the equipment. We did recently change out radios throughout our system to hopefully make our communications better. This is an item just to start the rehabilitation process of our aging infrastructure of these communication items throughout all the different well sites. Twenty one thousand five hundred currently will get us a really great jump start. It's not something we're going to be able to do in one because we're talking a lot of money. So we want to start now with a staging process and then just work through that and maintain.
Does that telemetry allow for encryption?
Uh, yes, yeah, they have encryption. And then we have our own server that we worked off of as well. So it does keep us from the cybersecurity side of things extremely.
And we have had homeland security and so that gave us some directions.
Good. So the next item is the Oak Ridge tank. You're all very familiar. We're asking for two million in this year's budget. You're probably asking why? Because the contractor was two point two? I asked that same question. And so the answer was that we anticipate a lot of the work to, that's going to get started hopefully soon. We'll spend some money out of what's been allocated this year.
Like first draw will be this fiscal year?
We think that about the first five hundred or so, yeah. And so the remaining balance will be the two million. Minus, of course, the one and a half million that we have from the grant coming in. So we'll be able to wrap that up from here. And the last one is the aforementioned Peachtree Drive project that Mike talked about with the streets as well. This is just one that they've said is a priority for that. So.
Which one is this small little water line project that you're going to have to stack?
Uh, so we don't have it on here because, uh, so we actually did the bid. Where we had a lot of the material on hand, it's only going to cost us about nine thousand dollars. And so we just are going to be proceeding with that. It's, it's three forty east if you're interested up around the Briarwood area going, it's pheasant.
Pheasant way, it's between London and the home.
So it's a couple hundred feet as well. It's a smaller project, which is why we thought it's impacting four homes. So we thought it would be a great opportunity. And for the cost, it would be amazing. And then future outlook, I just want to touch on those. The replacement of two service vehicles will start up again next year. You'll see that they weren't in this year's like we typically have done. That's because of an administrative one. Two of those were moved, which would have been this year. Moved to the administrative. So instead of just bumping everything up and shortening that, we'll give this this budget a little bit of a reprieve and then we'll look to start that up next year. Back trailer is just something we have on our wish list, which we talked about all the utilities and park strips and that. We use backer truck services from Twin D. And an upgrade on that back trailer ultimately will allow us to a little bit more of that in-house and maybe some save on some of those expenses. And then very short, we hope to have a new well site. Period. Any other?
There's some work being done. We'll have a conversation about that, more like than a closed session, acquiring land and things like that. So that's forthcoming.
Any other questions or thoughts on this?
To answer the questions about the bond, currently it's a about three point six percent interest rate. The final payment is in September of twenty thirty one.
It's one of those that starts at two percent, ends at four percent. So it's escalating as the, as it matures.
Thanks, Eric. Thank you, Dan Stevens.
You're welcome.
Good job.
I like how we don't give you the comfortable chairs over there, so you guys don't have to be comfortable.
All I like is chair. I'm staying here for a while.
Chair, from what's a chair.
So sanitation department, we're going to talk trash, I guess. So you guys need to lighten up a little bit.
That was my favorite dad joke. Thank you. That was awesome.
Anyway, so our sanitation is very short and sweet. So ACE is giving us a five percent increase. We're recommending that we go with that. Nate, I can't remember. What was next year? Didn't we work out a deal with them?
Five percent.
Five percent.
So five, I think they wanted ten in the beginning. We negotiated down to five. This year, five next year, right?
I don't remember.
He doesn't either, right? It was a long time ago. We settled with five percent. So I think that'll work out real well. Spring cleanup is twenty thousand dollars. That's going real good. If you haven't been by the Snoop Park. The lower end, it's going quite well. We'll wrap up on Saturday. And probably have that cleaned up by the end of next week. I would think so. We've got them coming in. Glass recycling, I kind of hope I can get a, don't, or a code enforcement person to see the amber bottles, see if you can figure out where they're all coming from.
IDC clear.
Maybe, yeah. I won't say that. Yeah, yeah. Anyway, so that's going really well. You know, kudos. I can't remember what her name was. The young gal. I thought that was awesome.
Ally.
Ally, yeah. You know, I, I was surprised, you know, we had ten thousand in the budget last year. We're thirty two hundred this year. We have eight containers out there. We're dumping every other week. So it is a success. It is working. It is costing a little bit of money to do so, but I think it's a good thing. So we're excited about that. At this time, you know, we have no equipment that we're looking for. And then future outlook, we need to do a garbage can audit. That would insist of you know, wind blows, somebody fixing up an extra garbage can and we have to take it out. So we would like to go through an audit to make sure our residents are not getting extra cans, basically. So that's something.
Natalie's already started this.
She has?
By her own initiative, yeah.
Let's, let's take lessons learned from the drainage audit to the waste can collection.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we only got five thousand to worry about that one. So the thing with, that if we end up with a roll-off truck, my recommendation would be to put a, a big dumpster at the park. Kind of a half-sized dumpster and then take, and maybe move this to another spot so that we have two locations. So.
For the glass.
For the glass.
And I'm also going to add to your future outlook, we're going to need to purchase blue cans one day.
Yeah, ACE is working on a price to, to give us a lot as well.
May not be a cost to that. May just be a contract obligation to date a little bit longer to get them free.
Yeah, so the, and that's the thing to keep in mind here is ACE increased our pickup rate by five percent, but we're not proposing a rate increase.
So that was, that's where I was going to go. Is there a reason why we don't just-
So we have, we have two hundred thousand, yeah, we have about two hundred thousand roughly in fund balance. So sanitation, it's such a limited thing that we can use it on. So you'll see that we're using forty one thousand dollars of that fund balance right now. The big, and this is where my recommendation would fluctuate if we're, is depending on how we want to look at the blue cans. If we're looking at purchasing brand-new cans, Mark thinks it will cost about two hundred thousand dollars. So if we need to start saving for that, then I would recommend a slight fee increase. We've had some hope with ACE that they may negotiate something. So best case scenario would be no cost to us, just at the end of the contract. At the end of a future contract, ACE would give us the cans. That's the best case scenario. And then obviously anywhere in the middle. So right now I'm not recommending a rate increase. But just know that if we're looking at purchasing our own brand-new, we'll certainly need one. Otherwise, I'm okay using a little bit of fund balance until we figure it out.
Because the cans belong to ACE.
So blue cans do, yes.
So didn't everybody says pass a blue can by the blue can?
Currently?
So it reduces our ability to, if we go off our RFP, we're kind of stuck with ACE unless we have our own cans. And we've been told by ACE that generally most people own their cans. Most cities own their cans. So.
What's the timing on this decision? Is this, are you just putting it on our radar?
Maybe two years.
Okay, so.
Two years.
So we have time.
We have time. Okay.
And that's why you're not recommending the fee increase decision.
Right. Yeah, I'm okay using a little bit of fund balance for now. We'll hope for the best and try to negotiate something.
Mark and Mike, we're doing some research on what our options are with the blue cans.
But at worst case, it's two hundred grand at some future point and we're using fifty of the two hundred now. We'll really need to make the decision next budget.
Yeah, and we're getting hit with another five percent increase next year.
Correct.
So that's why I say I, we can get by without a rate increase. Should we look at one potentially?
Next year.
But.
How many, can, how many garbage can? What would be the cost if we were to not use fund balance? Just out of curiosity, not suggesting.
A little bit taking to make up that difference for fees?
Well, for, so the forty one grand, essentially like a four percent.
Four percent.
You, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I can't remember how many charges.
I mean, it's no different increase than the increase on the water, eight.
I'm torn on it too. Staff's recommending not against it.
I know, but.
What, what we're asking for, what I was like. Do you do it this year? So you have the two hundred grand ready and you don't have to do it the following year? Do you wait and really see what happens? And staff's recommendation typically in the past has been, we'll let, we'll wait and see approach.
Well, because we don't know what the contract might be and they might give us a heck of a deal.
So that's why, give us time to do some research. We've got to look at RFPs and what other cities are being charged. We're getting a pretty good deal even with five percent increases. We did look. Mark looked at different cities and our rate is pretty good.
I thought when we talked about this, it was, it just felt like it was still-
That's why we kept the contract.
Like that was the right, that was the right fee.
So the question is, what do we do? And so the next year or even two, I guess, we're going to be looking at all of our options and we'll have a better idea of whether we need two hundred thousand dollars or if we're going to go with ACE again and we get them at the end of that contract if we use them again. We'll see. We got to do some research.
All the trash I got to give you. So we can move on to the drainage now.
Alright, so, yeah, our odd couple here. So you all got to know Cameron. I did promise that I would put him in here and I had to say this was a highlight. Unfortunately, the air quote, because the drainage object obviously was absolutely miserable. But hats off to him as a highlight because he was fantastic, his perseverance through it, all the effort, all the work, all the headaches. He's just been remarkable. And so I wanted to make sure to touch on that and all of his work in that. That's been one of the primary focuses for him this entire year, unfortunately. But then we do have a wonderful highlight in Drew Howard. If you haven't had a chance to meet him, I'd encourage you to meet him. He's absolutely remarkable. He did come to us with experience in stormwater already, which was outstanding. He was in a local Utah municipality. So he did come over and wanted to be here. I do want to add that one of his touching points for wanting to come here is that he really enjoyed the culture and that that we had in our public works. And so we're excited to have him. They've started on the minimum control measures, which is the state regulations, which include public education, outreach, illicit discharge detection, some of those things. All of those compliance issues with the state reporting that have been really challenging with all the other responsibilities of the drainage utility to be able to perform. So now Drew's coming in and and absolutely knocking them out of the park. And, and he does love enforcement. Very excellent and extremely enthusiastic in enforcement. So.
Is there a fight in the heart spring?
He's, he's addressed them. McDonald's was right on the edge today. So, yeah, but he's-
Rick Banger is always afraid, concerned that we're not enforcing ourselves.
Oh, yeah, he's going to go enforce over there. No. But yeah, he's absolutely wonderful. He's been a drop-in fit for the public works. All the guys adore him. He's just been fantastic. So we're really grateful that we've had that opportunity to be able to add him at just the right time. Then moving forward to budget highlights, we just have a few comments. Three fifty three, we did increase it eight thousand, which you also saw reflected in the streets on Tuesday night. That was because we saw a fifteen percent increase. Jaketa, our normal, who had been doing our sweeping services, went, they opted to not just do, hold their price, do a nominal increase. They requested that we put it out for bid again. They did. Ended up with a fifteen percent increase down the road. So we went with an additional eight thousand in each of those to still allow the same kind of performance that we've been getting from our sweeping contractors. Three seventy five, we were intending to add a little bit. This is going to go out to bid soon. This is our pipe cleaning and video inspection. We will see increases in that just in the video inspection costs already. But we did not change the amount for now. It kind of came in a little bit late and we felt like we could at least take care of what we definitely needed to reevaluate and, and decide if next year we want to see what kind of increase. And then we had the four seventy nine, which saw an increase. Maintenance on drainage systems and disposal of contaminated materials. The reason for this is that we have a wear system in that de-camp building that we've kind of talked about that does require some extra cleaning. All that stuff is considered hazardous material. So it has to be hauled away to the landfill. Boundless landfill doesn't let us bring it there anymore because they want to make sure that they're extending their life as well. And it's just mucky and messy in that. So we have added costs because Davis County landfill is a lot more expensive for the same amount of material. And we have to take it up there. So we wanted to offset some of those costs there. Any questions on any line? Alright, and the capital equipment, we have the two vehicles. We had talked about this in the hiring of Drew. He currently doesn't have a vehicle. We're just kind of splitting time with him, with Cameron or auxiliary vehicle. We knew that we would be anticipating needing to get him one. The reason we have two is that Cameron's is at that four-year point. I think is actually the five-year, which we still see a good return. One talking point to that, we talked about the return on these vehicles. We're, we're originally anticipating and hoping for a fifty percent return because we figured we'd be getting a two-for-one. We were always doing one vehicle a year constantly. We thought we'd get a fifty percent return. It's a two-for. We have newer vehicles. It was great. We're seeing upwards of over sixty-five percent return over the past five years on the sale of these vehicles. So we're actually coming out money ahead. So we feel like that's quite successful. So one of these vehicles would have the sale of a vehicle attached to it. We would probably anticipate well over the thirty, thirty-five thousand dollar mark for that. We're just seeing that a hundred.
One thing that's nice about the way that we're getting rid of them is, I mean, we could sell a truck here and it could be back in New York. So I mean, we're, people are buying our vehicles from all over the country and we've, we've been getting some, I feel like pretty premium prices. And as we get, the trucks that me and Babe drive will be our four years where we think that we're going to be hitting that mark. So.
Be that prime, prime time. So we do hope we still have the support to continue that. And then lastly, we jump into the projects. Fourth East pages to a hundred south, that's a project where we've got. Fourth East pages to 100 South, that's a project where we've got a reconstruct coming up next year. So we want to do some of these modest drainage improvements prior to that work so that everything's done and fresh and new like we want it up there. The Doyle Creek Box Culvert is a contribution that we add to Davis County doing that box culvert that spans from just east of Frontage Road all the way up to Main Street ultimately. This is our participation with engineering expenses and that for that. And the remaining balance was going towards that Peachtree Drive. We placed it there. We don't anticipate we'll use all of this. So we'd either be able to put some into reserves or we do have some one-off projects that aren't necessarily connected to a street rebuild. But we feel like we might be able to utilize them there, but those are yet to be seen until we get the other projects.
One of the one-offs is on 1250 West where we have the grants from the WFRC. We do have a pipe that traversed grade that we've got to straighten up, so some of those funds will probably go to that area so that we can keep that project.
Lots of questions?
Thank you too. All right, uh, I had a Utopia.
Utopia Communications Fund, this is the people who have gone on a contract pay for their Utopia connection.
Which page is that? 57? 57 says debt service.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's probably right.
So 70, page 70 is the Telecommunications Utility Fund. This is where people are paying their their loan payment for their connection 10-plus years ago, that they're still paying on. So we collect it and then send all of it, but 5% to Utopia. And we keep the remaining 5% and transfer it to the general fund for admin services. Back on page 63 is the Utopia Fund. This is the the debt service. I still have the Utopia rebate numbers.
Yeah, Councilor Meekum, have they discussed it in your meetings, what the rebate will be this next fiscal year? We have our meeting scheduled for Monday.
For Monday.
So we, we should know. Generally, it's been a 2% increase if they continue doing it there.
If they don't give it to us, I'll get really mad again. I did last year. You're never sure where I come from and so they're, everybody's really quiet and all of a sudden like, where are things at? And everybody goes, yeah.
So you'll get that number and plug it in.
So a couple of years ago, they said that there was. They said they wanted to keep the city's contribution the same and hoping they would supplement.
The interest, the interest, generally the bond payment interest goes up 2%, though that's what they always try to cover, so our payment stays the same.
So that's why I've left that 385 there, but obviously through their meetings that could change. So once we get updated numbers, we'll.
We'll watch for that.
Yeah. I think the last thing we have is the RDA on the final page. You'll notice the, as we talked about, the increase in the Porter Walton area, or excuse me, contractual increase for Young Power Sports, that was new. We'll, we'll finish out the project, the 400 West and Parish Lane project. And then that $40,000 in capital for the economic development plan is the finalizing of the general plan and general and economic plan.
And what's not in here, I know that you've discussed in the past, is potential betterments to the I-15 interchange. I actually don't want to budget for it, so Mike can go in there and say, do all these things, and then if they don't do those things, then we'll budget for it. I don't want to say we have so much money to better and they're like, sweet, we'll take your money, do that, take their money.
So did they know about the one thing we got about the sign that they may be going to do because they got rude one in the chair room?
Uh, we'll talk about that in the work session. Ultimately, the sign that is in front of the chair room. So that's why it's not in the budget, but we are mindful, Kevin and Mike are mindful of those betterments and making it look really good on our.
And Kevin's thinking about where that location would be if we would get that presented to us in the work session.
We have some ideas. We'll talk about it.
They want that spot pretty bad. We own right there.
Yeah, well, they want it so bad then, the price just went up.
Supply and demand.
I've got an officer, I need a fund. All right. Last thing is personnel. No surprises on what I'm recommending. I generally keep the same methodology because I just feel it's fair and and understood and expected. One of the biggest things that we try to do is maintain our current staff. And losing staff is more expensive to lose them, to hire, replace, train, get them ready. So an incremental increase goes a long way with our current staff show appreciation of what they do. So what's in the budget is a 2.5% increase for COLA, which is consistent with the December, December CPI for the Western region, which is in the same metric that I use every year, and then a 2% merit, which will be, essentially the number is determined 2% merit by the employee. But it's just essentially a pot of money that department heads get, gets to distribute as they see fit. If you have overperformers or underperformance, they just get that pot to distribute as they see fit, which I would tell you, you think that maybe they don't do that. But our department heads are actually really good about recognizing the high performers, and it's not just 2% across the board. They actually do a really good job recognizing those that are doing really well. So that's what's in the budget, and that's my proposal, is the 4.5% increase essentially for employee, but 2.5% for employee. Would be automatic for each one. What that does also to our scale is it shifts our scale 2.5% to make sure we don't fall behind in our ranges. There is going to be a need for a compensation study in the near future, and I'm hoping with the methodology we've used has kept us up to, you know, up with a lot of other cities instead of having in that large increase where you have a compensation study and you need to find $150,000 to get caught up. I'm hoping we don't have to deal with that type. But our employees are awesome. I want to keep every one of them. And I think this is just a good way to support them. If you want to give me more than that, I will take it. But 4.5% is the recommendation. Questions? Councilor Sumner has this conversation for last meeting.
My percentage on the percentage over time. Well, as so long as we're competitive with other cities, I'm comfortable with it.
Do we know what other cities are?
You won't know.
Yeah, so, in fact, we talked about it today. So I just had a fire. I just had a fire meeting and, you know, South Davis Fire proposing 3.5% in COLA in top of their, their step in grade. And I'm, where'd you get 3.5%? And they couldn't give me the data, which is really frustrating, where are you getting the data? So I challenged them on that. But I did have a conversation with two of our neighboring cities, and they actually use a similar methodology, but they do January to January, and there's this 2.4% in there. With, and some of those cities, like North Salt Lake, has a step in grade for their positions, which is like 5% on top of that COLA. Police Department has a pretty aggressive one for North Salt Lake. So again, 4.5% is what I'm proposing.
I'm also mindful of the fact that I went through the research to know that our mean median salary employee in our city can't afford to live in our city. So I'm well aware of that as well.
I'm, I'm supportive of this, what you've proposed, but I would like to see this year us looking at doing a compensation study so that next year, when we're budgeting, we're sure that we're in line.
Lisa Rongne is working on our job descriptions to make sure that they're actually accurate before we actually figure out which one. And what I'm going to need from all of you before we do a compensation study, and I don't want to necessarily use the same person we used last time. I've used him for almost every one of my compensation studies. I don't want a fresh look. And so Bryce has actually gotten a few recommendations of food to reach out to. But ultimately, what matters to me is what cities we compare to. So that's where I'll need your help, is saying what's fair and what. I mean, again, I just had a budget meeting with Irma this morning, and, and they had a compensation study, and they were comparing their employees to Human Resource Director of Leighton City as a comparable. I've got a, that's not a reasonable comparable, and I think the comparables matter, your job description, as well as the organization's responsibility. So before we do that, Lisa's been helping out with job descriptions to make sure, the title doesn't matter.
How much does that compensation study cost roughly?
If you went out anywhere from 50 to 75,000 dollars.
So the thing, Shaylan, I guess, to your point, if you want it through your next budget meeting.
We're gonna need some.
They would have to hit in this fiscal, the fiscal year we're considering.
All right. Is that what you're looking at, Brett? Is that what you're proposing?
Potentially. I, Lisa, do you want money this year? We, we didn't really ask for it this year.
It's not in here. That's why I'm asking the question. If you're, if you're wanting the compensation study to look at compensation for budgeting in.
That may be a little impressive if Lisa's working on all of the job descriptions. So maybe this year we put the groundwork in place, and then during our next budget cycle, we say, okay, we're going to put aside 75,000 or whatever, and then we do it, so.
And we did have, what was it, just a year after you came into your resort?
I, I implemented the one you did. I wasn't part of the conversations you had, which was really exciting to try and implement what you had discussed, and I didn't know you discussed.
We, we have had a compensation study before.
Well, I, oh, yeah.
It was 2019 when we implemented the, the fiscal year 2020. Fiscal year 2020 is when it was implemented, so we are.
I stand by my same comment that we talk about every year, that I'd really like to understand better the compensation package as a whole, just so that it would be easier to make these decisions.
What do you mean, understand that?
Well, we've asked to understand better the benefits and.
You're just saying.
Bryce has just finished up and got a really good survey made.
Not just salary, but also healthcare, bereavement, holidays, et cetera.
Yeah.
So Bryce has spearheaded it. He just did this awesome study with a whole bunch of cities who participated in special service districts. And I mean, it's, I guess it's tough trying to compile it and make it make sense, but that's what he's working on right now. So we're going to have that conversation.
I guess you also have to consider some of the benefits you're asking for are not monetary benefits.
I understand that.
As well, so.
I understand that, but it's still a benefit, and I, it helps to paint the whole entire picture.
No, and I think again.
And, and here's why I'm saying that, because I, in the past, I've always felt like that COLAs were, we were consistent with COLAs. I'm not seeing the same thing in the private sector right now, so that's part of my concern a little bit. Is that if the private sector isn't increasing at the same level, and we're looking at a poverty tax increase, I, I really have to, I have to really weigh that carefully. So I need to understand all of the benefits to, you know, I, I want to keep our employees the same as everyone else. But I also, I also have to figure out how we're going to pay for it.
Were we going to look at the training anymore? Did we get any hours of what we think people are getting for training?
So follow-up question to that. So are you, when you're asking for training hours, are you asking for training hours pertaining specifically to what's being assigned in the budget? Their trainings we attend that are free or Zoom or webinar?
No, I don't think, I'm, I'm thinking we want to know how many hours that we are, I guess that you're, you're out of the office doing training per position, like, you know, our, you know, our officers, they're getting 40.
So if I'm sitting at my desk watching a webinar, is that counted as a training or not?
No.
So you want to know when
When you're not.
A training, when your, your tushy leaves the seat training.
Yeah, when you're, when you're, when you're actually at a training.
So if I'm at Davis County.
The budget train, of the, the training.
That's why I'm asking, because it's.
That's what I want to understand. If you're at your desk, like, doing a webinar.
Or what if I'm going to Davis County for a drainage meeting or something like that? Do we, do you want to know that? Or was just down in Irma today for my board meeting? Is that?
No, 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 no.
Can I just tie it to first the budget?
Okay, so.
And then go from there?
Yeah. That's what I'm saying.
Can I start there and then we can?
I want to understand, I want to understand those train, the training and education budget better.
Okay. No, I think that's a good place to start, because that's what we were talking about on Tuesday. How am I going to ask for this? Because I'm drafting this email, and I'm like, what am I asking for? So let's just tie it to the budget first, and then we can.
Yeah, that's all I, that's all I.
All right, department heads, you're on notice, that email's going to be going out to 20 of your employees. What? No, not just the cost. I want to know how many hours you're gone is the request, so.
But that's hard because, like, gone at trainings? Okay, well, I'm sitting there in a class, and I'm, I have my computer out, but I'm also listening.
No, no, but you're out of the office, so that the question is if you're out of the office.
If you're, if you're out of the conference or something, I get that you're still managing your job, but I think it would still be helpful to understand how many hours of, in my mind, that's still, you're still training.
Right. How many hours you're out of the office?
Okay, I know, I'm just gonna say, if it's, if you spend a dollar on this training budget, where were you and how many education?
I think the point that Bryce is making, which is a really good point, is, and I learned this from my dad best, is I may be out of the office, that doesn't mean I'm not working.
Well, we agree with that.
So that's maybe, I know, I know you agree with that, and that's what Bryce is saying. What Bryce is saying, if I'm at a conference, at a training, that's mandatory or is it not mandatory, and I'm still working, what, what, what do you want as a city council for me to report back to you?
But frankly, at, I, I think at any professional level, that expectation is there. Of course, if you're out of the office at a conference, you're still working, but it doesn't, it still is all, I'm not, I'm not getting that prescriptive about it. I just want to understand the training. So if you're gone for a week to a conference, that's all I want to know. Again, that you're still working. Nobody, nobody's like.
Okay, so let me, I think that's, I was worried the staff was thinking, wait.
So I have a report from.
Say, yeah, this is how many days I spent at conferences or training or whatever.
So I have this report from my, from Bryce and Jennifer and Lisa that these are, these are what I'm attending, and here's the cost associated with that. And add dates.
Yeah.
Are you good with that?
Yes.
Okay, that's, I mean, we, we kind of do that already.
What the police department told us today was super helpful.
What they, what did you tell them?
They said, we need at least 40 hours, and here we get about 110 hours. Perfect. That was all I needed to know.
We can actually apply a.
Then we can kind of get an understanding.
No, I think it'd be good to see, I actually think it's really good to see where we are training and what we are learning to bring back to the city, what value it has. Because there's absolutely nothing, in fact, I think we don't want to brag about how engaged we are in what we're bringing back.
It would be, like, I mean, if they want to give us a list, like, hey, this is what everyone did, great, but I'm just, I'm just trying to understand generally, like, what does the police budget for training cover? Oh, it sounds like it covers at least 40 hours per employee and it's maybe 110.
And that's required training. I think that would be also something is what's required.
But keep in mind, we do, so we all have certifications that require some training, right? So I have 40 hours of training, I must maintain my certification, and Bryce and Haley.
I think that would be helpful. I think that would be helpful too, and they don't need to be related. Like, if you're just like, hey, I have to have 40 hours, I have to have 30 hours for my license.
There's, there's a difference between certification, recertification training, and enrichment training.
Yes.
Is that what you're?
I think so. I think just trying to get a feel for, you know, like, if you, so for example, if I was gone for two weeks, you know, two weeks of training and 30 was needed for my thing, then I have 50 of enrichment probably. Just, just.
No, that's great. That's, thank you. I appreciate it. I was, what the heck, what am I doing here? But anyway, that was super helpful. Happy to share that.
Can I ask you that with the training thing? That Western study, is that for governmental entities?
It's just the CPI. I know you can break it down. In fact, Nate and I were having this conversation.
CPI that you could apply across all industries?
It's a, it's applied for inflation for the Western region, which, you know, talks about oil, gas, and food and all that stuff. So it encompasses all that. So it's the inflationary increase.
I like, Councilman Hirsch just don't know, really know where the personnel increases fall. Because in my industry, I see people getting huge increases, and I see people getting no increases. I shouldn't bring a personal example in, but my wife got 0% two years ago, 0% last year, and 3% this year. She's the leading salesperson in her company. And she's, you know, it's a, well, she's stupid, I guess you could say, for not going somewhere else, right? But it, it's just, it's just so hard to tell. It's because, because it just depends on. Uh, and it's, uh, because, because it just depends on the business and what's going on.
Sure. I think it does, but they do have some other, like, they do have some private sector. I'll, I'll do some checking and ask a few questions.
That's why I'm come saying it comes down more so specific industries, you know, and, and, and govern, government, cities, municipalities. And if we're keeping pace with, uh, or way, way above, you know, other municipalities around.
I have not.
I was gonna say, I think in the past you've always had maybe some idea, that's very helpful to me. Cause I agree, it is different, this is a different industry per se than say private sector.
So the compensation study is where we really get a good sense of where we start lining up with our job. The compensation study is for that. The cost of living, where eggs are thirty-five dollars for, you know, five, whatever it is, right? So that's the cost of living and that's what the C P I covers. And, and I've chose Western region throughout my career for a specific reason, because Mountain region, to be honest with you, is always higher than Western. Mountain is always probably one percent or so, so I haven't looked up Mountain because I stopped looking at it, it could be three point five percent. But Western region's two point five and usually that's somewhat in line with the rest of the country, but maybe a little bit more. So if you look at the entire United States, and this has been typical on my shift, I haven't looked in a while, but that's why I've stuck with Mount or West. Because I feel like that's the in-between. I'm not asking for a lot. That's really state of Utah C P I, which is higher than what's happening in Idaho or Nevada.
Yeah, and those compensation studies, if I remember right, because that was my first year of mayor, it was, it was compared apples to apples.
Best we can.
Yeah, other municipalities.
Who we lose our people to, right? So I'm gonna lose Dave Walker to this city to do that job. I may not lose Dave Walker to an excavation company, or I can't compete against that excavation company, but I do care about the Public Works Department.
Right.
And, and just for historical sakes, since we have new council members, the way that it was done during the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty compensation, as the way it was done before was you had quartiles. In the first quartile, an employee would get four percent up to a four percent raise. Correct me if I'm wrong, old, old timers, I mean that one. Four percent if you're in the first quartile, three percent in the second, two percent if you're in the third, and one percent if you're in the fourth. So you've got this serious compression issue happening where we actually had department heads making barely more than who they're reporting to. And so the biggest cost of that compensation study was twenty to thirty thousand dollar increase to the department heads to get them back to market for their counterparts throughout the area. That was the most expensive part of that. And I, and I don't like that compression issue. There is this value of giving your new employees a lot of money upfront so they stay with you, but then you're not rewarding the loyalty or the, you know, the knowledge that they've gained and skills they've gained. And so then they can go take that skill somewhere else. And I, I'd like to keep it fair and consistent across the board, so. Cool.
Is that it?
So we have.
All right, most adjourned.
Salute.
Great, thank you.
Hey, off record, mayor.
Right, stop recording.
Hopefully you're okay, you're fine.
Okay.
Hopefully you're okay with this, but we don't have a.